Good evening, everyone.
My work, yeah, that's, my works, it works well. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. It's, I'm just returning from vacation within the last couple hours, so it's already April, excuse me, already August 28th. What we're going to do is recite the Pledge of Allegiance if you would join us. Jeanne, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Thanks, Jeanne. Now, it would be good if Tom Jacobs introduces himself as Chair and the other members, please. Jeanne?
Hi, I'm Jeanne Connor.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hi, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Great.
Nancy Love, 7 years.
Great. And Stuart?
Steward, Tom Manager.
You'll be hearing from Stu, I think, once or twice during the course of the meeting. We have a consent agenda, which the Board has been beneficiary of. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes and the warrants as reviewed. Could I at least have the motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion on the consent agenda. Jeanne?
There was just one motion that was attributed to me on other business. It says Jeanne Connor stated, "A great job done with the Bennington Battle Day period." That was actually Don.
Jeez.
I don't want to take her.
Too bad.
Easily confused. Tom Jacobs, is there?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, can we add the resolution that you made, the minutes say, that you called the Board and citizens present to adopt a resolution condemning hate and violence that occurred in Charlottesville? I'm just, it would be nice if we included that resolution.
I think that was the intent, and I really appreciate you bringing that to the Board's attention. And it'll be so indicated at this point.
Okay. And could, there's some, there are some name misspellings. Can we just, we can submit this and have them corrected?
Yeah, I'm sure that we can do that as a sidebar, but...
Jeanne, but what was the controversy earlier, a few minutes ago, about $1,800 worth of the donuts?
No controversy. My misunderstanding.
It was for concrete donuts. It wasn't an $1,800 budget for donuts.
I had my grandchildren at the, on the vacation, and we went to the donut, it's called Backdoor Donut. I think, I didn't spend that much, but I almost ate as much as they did, too. So, thanks for the minutes and the warrants are all in favor of the consent agenda, signified by aye.
Aye.
That is seven in favor, no abstentions or objections. As is our practice, we do set aside 15 minutes or so for citizens' comment. I noticed that there are about five to eight, in, five to, excuse me, about nine individuals that would like to converse with the Board. The citizens' comment period is for those times where their citizens would like to have a discussion, or at least bring something to the Board's attention on matters that are not on the agenda. And I think, Stuart, if in the future, when we set the agenda, could, when we have citizens' comment, which, could we make sure that that is out there, that it says it's for matters that are not already on the agenda? Because I don't want to have citizens feel that we're going to entertain a lot of discussion, we just don't have enough time. And if something does require further discussion by the Board, then we will do it as a regular formal agenda item. But we certainly would encourage, we look forward to folks coming and visiting with us and suggesting how the town and the Board can meet the citizens' needs. And the first name I do see that is signed in is Dr. Dundas. Dr. Dick Dundas?
I'm back again. I read the minutes of the last meeting, and I thought that they did not completely reflect the, or did not reflect the entirety of what we, the Bennington Oral Health Coalition asked. And so I wanted to clarify that when in a public agenda. And I would like to present the asks that we have to your Secretary. Is that possible?
Please, that would be very fine.
So, I would like to just read them. There are four. What we are asking of the Select Board is as follows: that the cost to install, maintain, and supply a fluoridation system be ascertained, and that the town finance an official estimate; that members of the Water Department be sent to Rutland for an overview of Rutland's fluoridation system; that the Select Board engage with the SBSU and other parties for a robust effort to bring community water fluoridation to Bennington; and that the Select Board itself vote to support the fluoridation of Bennington's water system. So, I'm sure this is not the end of our list of asks, however, this is a start. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Good evening, Abby. Just for the purposes, could you just introduce yourself and your, where you live?
I'm Abby Shapiro, and I live on Morgan Street. A number of you have heard this story, and Stuart has started work on one of my suggestions, but I feel that it's, it's important, particularly as we talk about raising water bills. The current water bill at my house for this quarter, I'm on a meter, is $1,300. I have a small apartment. I do that so that I can afford my house on a single income. There are two people in my house, but I have a meter, which I think everybody should have, but I won't even go on that one. My tenant came to me June 1st, and she said her toilet was running. I had it fixed within two days. In mid-July, I received a letter from Linda Bermudez in the Water Department, who said I might have a leak and my water bill was going to be a bit higher than I normally expected. So I called her, and I said, "I think I fixed it." She said, "Well, do you want to hear how many gallons you used?" And normally, I use between 9,000 and 13,000 gallons. I used 154,000 gallons in less than a three-month period. So, I've talked a little bit with Stuart about this. I have three suggestions. The first one is, water meters need to be read more often. This is crippling. If I was on a fixed income, $1,300 for one quarter is horrible. It's horrible for me. I mean, holidays are not going to be as I would like them to be. I'm not the first person this has happened to, because when you go up to the counter, right at the ready, they pull up a little chart, and they say, "Yeah, if you have a pinhole over a three-month period, you use 79,000 gallons. If you have a sixteenth, sixteenth-inch hole that is leaking continually for three months, you use 279,000 gallons." Water is hugely expensive. You guys are the Water Board, and I don't think that it is a staff decision to read the meters more often. I think they need to be read monthly, so that somebody like me, who doesn't know that they have a leak, I mean, I went through all my crawl spaces, and boy, are they grungy. You know, so that, to have, this is specifically to help citizens who have meters, because we're not all big corporations, we're not all the hospital or the schools. We're little people like me, who happen to have an apartment. So that's, that's the first thing. And, oh shoot, now, well, we don't want to have, nobody wants to have the meters, but it's so inequitable. Everybody in my neighborhood, their toilet could burble forever, and they're still going to pay their 212 or whatever it is a month, and anybody who's got a meter gets hit really hard. And so the second thing that I would like to suggest is that there be a cap. I mean, I'm paying six times my normal water bill for one quarter, because my tenant didn't tell me the literal second her toilet was running. And so I feel like if there should be a cap that says, "Okay, if you have one of these unexpected things, and you in good faith are paying it, maybe you should be capped at twice your normal amount, or three times your normal amount." I'm going to pay six times my normal amount. So, these two things, reading the meters more often, and thinking about the citizens, and what, how crippling this could be financially, a small leak, I'm bringing it to you as the Water Board to say, "I think some of these things should be mandated. I don't think that we can, as we talk about raising water rates, continue the way we've done business for however many years we've done it."
Stay right there for a bit, just so we can just converse on it, because that's intolerable, you know, for any of us.
Yeah.
To have a bill like that with meters, and the technology comes the problem, but that's a problem that we have basically given to the citizens, that, you know, how, what can we do to ameliorate that? And your suggestion is cap it at some, some amount. But it also just seems like we should have a system that doesn't allow for that type of, I mean, can we put an apparatus on the meter that the bell goes off?
Well, a monthly read would do it. I mean, at least it would keep it down. I figure mine was running probably for about six weeks. She's a new tenant, she didn't want to, you know, make any waves, that kind of thing. But I had been in the apartment, so I, I'd say six weeks. So now, if it had been read sooner, and then somebody is contacted immediately, it does slow it down. Plus, that chart that they have right there, because as I said, I'm not the first person, that should go out to all the water users, particularly the people with meters, so that they understand that a small leak can be hideously expensive.
Stu, I have to, we, I think this Board, none of us were on the Board when meters became a reality. Could you just give us more, some background relative to how we're here, and what we might do to ameliorate situations like this?
Well, what we're attempting to do is to find out whether our software is capable, we can read the meters monthly. They're mostly radio read now, so that doesn't take a lot of time. What takes the time is for staff to go through the printouts and determine if someone's got an anomaly in their usage, which is what we do on a quarterly basis. And as I indicated to Abby, some, within the last couple of weeks, what we're trying to do is see whether the software will allow us to simply read the residential meters on a monthly basis, because that's where the hardest hit comes.
Right.
It's from the toilet that runs, and nobody does anything about it. And I don't have an answer for you or for Abby at this point.
Can, are we looking at new software, or potential?
I really, I don't know. I don't have any, I don't know.
I've got a question for you, Abby. Abby, did you determine that there was, you alluded to the fact that there may be a pinhole or a sixteenth?
No, it was the toilet.
It was the toilet.
And Linda and Joan both pointed out to me that toilets are the biggest offenders. Her toilet was working fine, it was just burbling away. And, you know, because it was working, she didn't think it was a critical thing, and as I said, she was a new tenant and didn't want to rock the boat.
Maybe you need, with new tenants or the current tenants, to jiggle the handle.
Oh, that's not it. No, no. It was, it was more serious than that. It required a plumber.
No.
I mean, I can do simple plumbing repairs. It required a plumber. And, you know, it is, once I pay this off, I'm planning on getting new water-saving toilets. But, you know, I'm not going to be paying it off for a while.
The, is this a unique situation that Abby's presenting to you, or are there others that have?
I would say it's relatively unique. Most, most, when we went to all meters for all of the multi-residential and mixed residential commercial users, as well as all commercial users, there was a time that a lot of landlords were being caught somewhat surprised by the amount of water they were using, because simply tenants don't realize that when your faucet's dripping or your toilet's leaking slowly, that goes on 24/7 for the whole quarter. And so we have found that when people have that kind of incident, they get much more aggressive in maintaining their units. But I think, Abby makes a good point. I think if we could, if we could read them monthly and get that information out, it would save the homeowner the additional charge. It would also save us water.
Yeah. No, that's right. I mean, here, that gallonage is going out of your place. That is a waste of a resource that we don't have.
Well, and it's going into the sewer system, and on and from there, you know?
I know, I know we have limited time, too, but I think this is worth it. And I'm going to call on the audience here. John Hale is here, too. John, I mean, I'm going to take the liberty of saying John has probably more apartments than many in this room. Can you comment on this, too, maybe, to add?
I have problems numerous times over the last five years, where tenants don't inform me that there's a problem. They don't even realize that water costs money. And then we get a letter from the medical office. We go through the building, and 97 times the toilet will be flat without running, or, you know, something. It's overflowing, because it's not adjusted right. So, to us, it's a pretty common problem. And yeah, 100,000 gallons were there, there were like toilets to run. And we had the apartment that used over 200,000 gallons. We had four toilets running constantly for a whole quarter. And it's just because the tenants didn't know the difference between water running and the fact that the bill's going up. Yes, it's pretty common for us. And you try to catch them, you try to educate them.
Yeah. Well, I think we should make this a priority, and, because it is an expense to the citizens, an expense to the town. And if we can really move this, and if we need additional resources for that purpose, then I think we, the Board, have to look at making that happen. But really, thank you very much, Abby.
Thank you.
Wait, I want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can a person who has a meter request at any point? Could you just check my meter at any point, or?
Well, I did, I did after that. I said, "I just want to make sure that, that this was the leak, and that it isn't something else." I mean, as I said, I went down in all my crawl spaces, and I've got, I've got an old house, I've got a lot of them. And they did check it, and it was fine, and so that was it. But what Stuart's saying is they can't record it, and, you know, they can just check it.
Okay.
But, you know, I maintain my house. I, as far as I knew, everything in the apartment was working great. So it's not a question of poor maintenance, it's just things happen.
Can I add to that, because we have problems if we call Linda to have them check the meter, and then we'll do the repair, and she'll come back, come back a couple of weeks later to see if we fixed it. If not, we'll go back to the building and work on the problem. So there is some, this cooperation in the town, obviously, because no one wants to waste the water.
Right. And I appreciated getting the letter, although I had already caught the problem.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut anybody off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Nels Kloster, I think you're... Doctor. Could you just introduce yourself, or the?
Yeah, sure. I'm Nels Kloster. I'm an addiction physician working in Bennington, operate Hawthorne Recovery Center. And I'm also the Board Director for the Turning Point here in Bennington. I saw an article in the Bennington Banner recently, there's some interest in bringing marijuana, or medical marijuana dispensary to Bennington. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to speak out against that idea. I mean, just sort of two quick points. I mean, the first one is discredit the idea of smoking marijuana as actually being considered medical. The professional organizations such as the American Medical Association, American Psychiatric Association, American Society of Addiction Medicine, have all come out quite clearly to state that smoking marijuana is not a medication, because, one, smoke is a harmful route to administer something, and, two, there's no control of dosage. And, you know, furthermore, there's really not a research base to support that. This has basically been driven by popular opinion and lobbying efforts to liberalize marijuana laws, which is a completely separate issue. And, two, the second point being that it seems to be counterproductive, given all the attention Vermont's been paying these days to troubles with drugs, opioids primarily, to introduce, you know, yet a greater supply of a, another substance that causes issues. And we do know from the research thus far, from the states that have created medical marijuana laws, as well as the states that have legalized marijuana, that both of these phenomena lead to an increase in consumption, and therefore, an increase in citizens that are struggling with addiction issues with marijuana.
It's like, just like the fluoridation issue. I have a feeling we have not heard the first or the last of this discussion, because the state legislature is probably going to even do more already. There is an application, you pointed out about the media, for a medical marijuana facility. I'm not sure how, where that stands, Stu. Has it been through the review process yet, with the application for a facility?
Other than, other than being contacted by at least two organizations that were expressing an interest in locating here, securing one of the licenses that have now been opened up, we haven't heard a thing.
Okay. Expect the Board's going to be interested in having a broader dialogue, and you probably have just started that. If you have, does, members of the Board, do any of you have a question for Dr. Kloster tonight? Feel free to.
It seems like a whole topic. We should, we could go forever on that.
Yes, 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 like many, but as I said, I think the discussion has started, and we will, this is one of those non-agenda items that would probably require an agenda.
Right. I'll be happy to come back and represent the con side of the argument for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mary Lou Albert, Mary Lou. Good evening.
I'm Mary Lou Albert, I'm from Bennington.
You bet.
First of all, I want to say that I am on, you, the Select Board's Commission for oral health issues in Bennington. And we did sit for over a year, or almost close to a year. Joe's there some of the times, and he knows it. So, I don't know if you, the Select Board, has a chance, had a chance to go over the report that Don Miller submitted. I know it was submitted, and it was quite lengthy, so I'm sure you had a lot of time to, to review it. But I see that it's, the fluoridation issue is being brought up again, and I don't really think that it should be considered at this point, being that you haven't even looked at the Commission's report. There are, if I remember correctly, your charge, when it was started, was to find out how to improve the oral health of Bennington residents, not water fluoridation, other than water fluoridation. That is one issue, but this, we were also to look at the other issues. There's many, many things that was recommended during the year. Everybody did their homework, everybody out there and tried to see why, why there is a problem. Is it just incumbent only in here, in Bennington? And it isn't. It's across the board. And it's, a lot of things, it's not just the water that you're drinking, it's the soda that you're drinking, and the dentists that are not available for residents, especially lower-income residents in this town. So there's a lot of things that they've got to look at. Now, one of the, they had a lot of actions that were suggested, including...
Mary Lou, you know, I think, and I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but we did get the report, it's been circulated, very comprehensive. I think the earlier part of the report is sort of an executive summary. None of us are physicians, scientists, or otherwise, that can really comment on the science.
Well, I wasn't getting into too deep.
No. But we're going to...
I just wanted to mention...
Go ahead.
Another, another couple of sentences. There have been six votes in this town on water fluoridation, and it hasn't passed. And since this last vote in 2015, we've had Flint, Michigan, and we've had PFOAs in the town, around the town, in surrounding communities. If anything, I think the community wants less chemicals in their public water supply versus more. So I'm just saying, I hate to see anything that divides the town. Battle of Bennington is always going on over something. I really do think that this is going to be a very, very divisive issue, again, and I don't foresee it. There's a lot of positive issues that we can do, and I really would like to go down that road. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Lunsner? Good to see you, Joel.
Hello.
Just for the record, your name, address, and all of that.
I'm Joel Lunsner from Bennington. I'm the President of the Downtown Bennington Alliance, and wanted to let everyone know about really exciting events that we have going on this weekend during Garlic Fest. It's called Garlic Quest. And it's more or less a scavenger hunt. Here's the, not going to give away the clues, but here's the card that you're going to get at Garlic Fest. You can also pick them up starting Friday at Hawkins House, Fiddlehead, and the Chamber of Commerce. There's going to be some really exciting prizes, an Apple iWatch, and I think six or eight other prizes for runners-up. And it should be a lot of fun. It's a way to really get people involved, hopefully get people downtown, walking around and having some fun. The clues are all...
Aromatic?
What's that?
Are they aromatic clues? Can you sense and smell the clues?
No. Well, I think we're all going to sense and smell garlic all through the weekend, but yeah, no matter where you are. There are going to be some fun clues that lead you to different parts of town, get you to take selfies at places, make sure you know a little history about the town, and downtown in particular. So, that's it. Just wanted to invite you to do that. It's going to be a lot of fun.
Are the tourists going to be getting that available at the motels and hotels, and...
We're, ooh, hotels and motels is a good idea. We were going to hand them out at the, at the front gate at Garlic Fest.
Okay.
And then also at Hawkins House and the Chamber and Fiddlehead.
Good.
So, should be fun.
Any questions for folks?
Sounds great.
All right. Thanks. Looking forward to a great weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Stewart, William.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I want to bring us back on to the issue of the water topics that we have.
This is Bill Stewart, by the way.
My name is Bill Stewart. I'm a town, I live in town. And we've had this issue before about the Morgan Springs. Bringing up the issue of it, again, is that I've noticed that the water has started slowly, trucks starting to slowly come in, more and more and more every day. And I knew that was, it was a slow period, that it kind of calmed down through the summertime, which was, you know, was appeasable. It did work out well. But now it's starting to pick up again. And I just wanted to bring up the issue and the topic that, I know at the end of the five years, we have this five-year contract, and it's going to be over in five years. But the bottom line is that to just make sure, knowing that it's slowly getting bigger, and it's going to start bringing more trucks, and I'm guessing, as winter gets around, windows close, they're going to start bringing in more trucks. But for the record, I'd like to ask that there's a little transparency, if there's going to be any changes to the contract, if they're going to try to amend this contract in any way in the next five years because of the slowdown, or is there going to be, if this town seems deemed that the water for the next five years is going to be for Crystal Rock, that we try to figure out the way that we're going to try to get back the water ourselves in the end of the five-year contract? But any changes to this amendment, anything at all? I'd like to have a little transparency about it, if there is, at any time. I see the, it's starting to, starting to pick up, it's starting to pick up, and it's starting to be more trucks every day.
I can say for the Board that if there are any modifications, amendments, proposed or otherwise, it'll be a full Board discussion, because the only thing that I want is if any amendments come, that it's for the benefit of the community, and not just for the proprietor.
Absolutely. I agree, Tom. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, can I ask, so are we monitoring the number of trucks? And is there any update on maybe moving the...
I can give it to you. I keep it to you.
No, I'm actually, sorry, I'm asking, Stu.
We don't monitor the number of trucks, we monitor the hours of which, of operation.
Yep.
And...
And the gallonage problem?
Pardon me?
And the gallons, I mean, how much is taken out?
Well, yes, we, because we bill.
Yeah.
Bill for those. But we are looking at a couple of places that we might be able to move out of the residential neighborhood, but we have to be sure that we have sufficient turning radii and all of those kinds of things that go along with it. So we're working on that. I certainly would hope we would have a solution that takes it out of the residential neighborhood within the next year, a year and a half.
Now, was that just to move the water to a place so they can pump it for the remainder of their five years, or to move it so they can have the contract extended, because we did move it?
No, it would be, we would be moving it to a different location under this particular agreement, which does expire, as you say, in five or six years. And a new contract would be negotiated, and that would be presented to these Board members, should the Board decide to continue the practice.
Have anybody tried to even think about trying to take the water over ourselves, bottle it ourselves, and sell it for ourselves?
Yes, we've thought about that.
We have, we have. But the last, the figure that we got was 18 millions, $18 million to build a facility, a large facility in Florida. And I don't think that figure was even close to be in the right estimate at all. For, we don't need a huge facility. The water comes out of the ground 1.3 million gallons every hour. And it's, it's pretty much crazy to think that we should not take this money over for ourselves and make a profit for ourselves forever, for an ongoing effort, for the entire town to have this effort. This money would be ours for the rest of... This money would be ours for the rest of this town's life, and the millions-
If in fact, if in fact you can find a market, and if in fact you can maintain that market, and that, that's the issue, it's not so much the eighteen million dollars or the cost of the plant in Florida, it's how much you make on that case of water that you can sell retail. And, you know, what I'm hearing is that if you don't, if you're competing against large retailers or large wholesalers, and you can't secure a market for your, your water, then you're going to be spending a lot of money and not making a lot of money in return. Right now, it costs us very little to take that water out of the ground and sell it, and I, I can't think of an easier, less expensive way to make money on Morgan Springs than what we're doing.
Wasn't the estimate that you were quoted-
That's, well, that, that was for a large plant, that's right.
No, no, no.
It was eighteen million dollars.
Right, but the, the profit margin on a case of water was what?
Oh, God, I knew you were going to ask that question.
Eighteen cents, eighteen cents.
Something like that.
It's not a lot of wiggle room.
We talked about that last time, you thought that eighty thousand dollars was a lot of money. These guys make thirteen million dollars a year selling our water, and we make eighty thousand dollars a year selling it to them. So it's kind of a huge gap between eighty thousand dollars and the millions, tens of millions that they make just selling it from, so if they can make it, why can't we? And we don't need to be as big as they are, we have the cleanest, purest spring for a long while around, I've already checked into it. Morgan Springs is probably one of the purest springs anywhere, especially when three hundred and forty degrees of our town is completely contaminated by PFOAs. It's kind of like an island marauder in the middle of nowhere, pumping millions of gallons of spring water that we're not taking advantage of, some other companies taking advantage of it.
We understand your position, let's, I think I had this conversation, let's move on.
And we might have-
You've done this before, but nothing changes.
Yeah.
No, it's good that you brought the number of trucks to our attention, and we should be working on that, so.
That's money for us forever. I mean, you've got to think of the ongoing, the ongoing money.
Yep, no, I think, I think if I were to look at it, I would be looking toward the end of the contract to see if there's a possibility of renewing or doing our own thing, but I can tell you, to involve a consultant and firms, it's going to cost a lot of money just to come up with that, and we should be looking towards that as we get closer to the end of this contract.
Well, you've worked hard enough at trying to find out how to make the TIF work, and this is a small idea to fix a lot of bigger problems down the road.
Right, thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Rose Telford.
Rose Telford, I live in-
Hi there, Rose.
I live in North Bennington. It's the same old thing, we want a bus, why can't we get one? And there's money rolling around, so there's money for stupid things, there should be money for that.
I see buses rolling all over town right now, and it seems-
Don't do us any good.
Pardon?
Don't do us any good. We want to go on trips, we don't want people to tell us-
Go ahead.
-that we can do something or not do something. It's, it's, nothing's changed. People can't even get to the center.
Rose, you offered to invite me to your next meeting, and you were going to let me know when you're, when you were going to meet, and you didn't have a date. Do you have that date at this point?
No, because everybody's dragging their feet, I'm the only one that-
Okay, so, so if you wouldn't mind, once you get a date set, would you let me know when it is, because I would like to attend your next advisory board meeting.
I want to know if there's money, any money in, that we could use towards a bus. There was money left, so, there's, there's got to be money, I know people donate money just for that reason, and if they do, where is it?
Stu, I don't think we have budgeted for a bus since-
We have not budgeted for a bus, and I can't tell you the last time we received a donation to support a bus or to buy a bus.
The only thing that I would suggest is we have a bus service within the community, which we should make sure is available to the seniors as well, so that it's time and a place for trips and everything else, and I think that's something that's been already looked into, and it's available.
It's actually working. It may not be working to the extent that the seniors who use the senior center are used to, because it does take, take some planning to, to set up with the public and private enterprises that we're using, but both the Council on Aging and the Green Mountain Community Network are working with our senior center to supply them with inexpensive trips to locations of their choosing. And, I mean, I haven't got a final report of how it went this summer, but the initial reports were pretty, pretty good.
Could you just, maybe one of the town managers' reports, give us a sort of a report as to what's happened? Jean, you have any questions, or anyone else?
I know the money for our bus, why can't we use that towards?
I think, don't hold me to the number, but that, what they got for this bus wouldn't get you the next four tires for the real, the new bus.
It's somewhere to start, they've got money for everything else, why, is, aren't senior citizens important enough? You know, we're not going to live forever, I'm seven.
Can I just take one second?
I don't want to go to the mall.
We've had this conversation like five meetings, maybe four times now.
I don't care.
No, no, my point is, it seems like every time we talk through it, the same questions are asked of Stuart, he provides the same answer, and then Jeanie at the past meeting politely offered to attend a meeting. I guess my only point is, we have the replication of the same conversation every time. It sounds as though the planning process to, to get a trip takes a little bit longer than it used to before, it could have been a little more, let's just go today and we'll go wherever we'd like, because you had your own bus. Maybe a slight modification to the current plan, or maybe having a liaison to schedule those meetings for you, it just seems as though that having your own bus might not be in the cards, but with a little more planning or through Jeanie's support, there might be an outcome that's not the same conversation a month from now or a few weeks from now, because I see your frustration every time you come to these meetings, and I don't think it's a, our goal isn't to, you know, say senior citizens aren't important to this community, I think that's completely incorrect, and we want to help, I just don't want to see the frustration mount every time, because that's not getting us anywhere.
Because we also-
I checked, it's twenty, I, we could get a bus for twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, I'm just-
Now, is that a lot of money?
Okay, let's not talk about the cost of bus today, and why don't you, and Jean-
I don't care, there's never a good time, because they never, they just keep sliding everything, they don't tell us anything, they don't do anything.
They would be us, ma'am, and they would be, with Stuart here, I think the people that are the "they" were in this room with you to try to make it better, I'm not, I'm not saying I have an immediate solution, but I know that, I probably don't even know enough to be dangerous on this topic, but I've heard your, your comments now, as I mentioned, maybe three or four times, and they're the same as they were before, and I think we're repeating the same information, but it doesn't sound like it's helping, and I don't know if that's us, or-
Yeah, I see.
-or them, or however it is, but it sounds like Jeanie going to the meeting might help.
I'm willing, but I can't drag people there.
Okay.
I mean-
Okay, I think probably we've had as much discussion tonight as we really can, Rose. Let's, we'll follow up, or you will follow up with Jeanie, and we'll see if we can at least find out what your situation is, and I can't promise you anything, I don't think the board can either.
Nothing changes. They're going to, but they never do. We've had meetings, they went, what they went through and done whatever they wanted to do, and never even let us know what was going on. This is a-
You've got, you've got to-
That's not right.
You've got to have your meeting with the seniors and Jeanie, and she will report back to us. I have very confidence that she'll do that fairly. No, thank you very much. Dr. Tenentis?
Good evening, doctor. Very good evening to all of you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we're, we're talking, we're not talking about the bus at this point, Dr. Tenentis, you have the floor.
I'm Alexander Tenentis, I'm an area activist involved in researching data relating to the fluoride issue, and I'm here speaking in a much smaller amount of time than I anticipated this evening. I would like to just respond to some comments that were made at a July 24th Select Board meeting with regard to fluoride and oral health outcomes in poverty within this town. Baby bottle tooth decay is up to three times the national average in poverty regardless of the fluoridation status of the municipality. Eighty-four percent of cavities of five to seventeen-year-olds, according to the Journal of the American Dental Association, are crevicular, and pits and fissures, they don't respond to fluoride, only dental sealants can help. The whole idea of fluoride in water, crossing the placenta for a woman in her first trimester of pregnancy, not realizing she's pregnant until she's late and goes to her physician two weeks later and is halfway through that first trimester, for which fluoride systemically or swallowed is basically generally avoided because animal reproduction studies have shown an adverse effect on the fetus, that's the FDA categorization for oral ingested fluoride. This really sticks in my craw. As a healthcare professional here in Bennington with prescription-writing privileges, I find it a personal and moral obligation to speak out, to protect the community that has clothed, housed, and fed me for the past three and a half decades. I'd like to spend some time sharing information with the Select Board. My phone number is 881-4604, I'm at aatentis@gmail.com. I stand ready to serve the board that serves so selfless for this community's needs. I would like to spend some time with you meaningfully, to give you data that you can really understand, appreciate, and edify. Thanks so much for time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joel, I think we're finished with the discussion. Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is a report, interim report from the Charter Review Committee. Co-chairs Robert Plunkett and Sean Marie Oller are going to share the early activities.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Do you need us to say our names?
You please, Whit.
Sean Marie Oller.
And Rob Plunkett.
Both Bennington members of the Bennington Charter Review Committee.
Yes, we are, I know-
I think you better speak close to that mic, because I think-
I was going to say, knowing how we can't hear you, I know that we need to get closer.
Right. Now we've got that criticism out of the way, how's the Charter Committee?
Well, I'm only actually speaking for the people in the audience who say they can't hear, and I know how frustrating that can be.
That could be.
So, I had hoped that Rob and I could show from a computer what, what the website looks like on the town, and there's only four copies here.
There's seven of us.
I know.
I'm going to give you a hard time, because-
Any more trees? So we, we had wanted to come here to update you on what we have done, and it is on your town's website that you can find all of the minutes, all of the agendas, the PowerPoint from Jim Barlow, and what we are up to. In addition to that, there is a place for public comments. But before we get to the public, that we're looking for public comments, I wanted Rob to maybe explain how we're working from the original charter, which he can go in detail about.
Sure. Essentially, one of our early meetings, and we've met five times now, there was the initial organization meeting, the presentation by Jim Barlow, and then we met just to discuss how we were going to be looking through the charter, and it became pretty clear right away that, that all of us wanted to go through the charter line by line, and that's what we're doing, and we've now gone through Chapters One and Chapters Two. Part of what we were doing, however, is originally we were looking at a charter that indicated that last amended in 2005, but the copy that we had was not actually reflected in the statutes as, as they were, so I contacted a number of people, and Stu, and Beth as well, I spoke to the Legislative Council and learned that the charter had actually been amended in 2013, unbeknownst to most of us, it was essentially technical changes that the Legislative Council had done, and I contacted them about getting the, the official text of the charter, which they didn't actually provide to me, but we did put together the official text of the charter, and so we're now working from the charter that doesn't appear on the website, but is the actual charter that appears in the statutes presently, and we're going through that line by line with the usual crossouts and whatnot.
Just so, not to interrupt too long, but so the charter that everybody looks at is not the charter that Bennington operates under?
It's minor, right?
Yes, yes and no, for me, there are periods and semicolons that are incorrect, so that's what I mean by it's not the exact charter. Substantively, I think it's all the same, there might be one substantive change that I think was inadvertent, that we're going to be addressing that is not, not significant.
But there's only a five-member, there's only a five-member Select Board really, rather than seven?
Yeah, so now we have to roll dice to find out the two that aren't.
Okay, go ahead, sir, go ahead.
But that's how we're looking at the charter at this point.
You guys appointed two attorneys to this committee, remember that. So yes, we are, we, we decided we would go from page, actually, I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce Robert Ebert, who's also on the committee, but he didn't want to come up and sit at the table with us.
That's fine.
So we-
He's actually in his normal Select Board spot back there. That's his, that's his spot.
He kind of said that when I came in, and he's, you know, wasn't going to move, so. We, as a committee, decided that we had some, I would say discussion about whether we would take topics we thought might be controversial, or that we thought might need updating, but we really decided we needed to go from page one straight through, and we are, I guess in essence, tracking changes and voting on each section as we go. So the agenda a couple of weeks ago said Chapters One through Four, and we got through One, and then the second week, we got through Two, so we're basically making progress, one chapter at a time. The other thing we would actually like to talk about is the public comments, and also about the forums, and having Jim Barlow come, and I'll let you talk about Jim Barlow.
Well, as, as I think all of you know, because you approved his, his contract, Jim Barlow has been contracted to be our consultant, essentially, and he did come down for one of the initial meetings to give us a, an overview of charters and charter amendments, and it was an eye-opener, I think, for, for many of us, not in terms of it being a surprise, but in terms of the depth of his knowledge and the steps that we will be going through to, to actually get to the final charter, and there are many different aspects of that towards the end, once we even recommend it to the board, and then, and then further along. So the, Jim Barlow, should the, suppose the point I'm trying to make here is that we want to have input from everybody, another presentation, and we had talked about literally co-opting the Select Board, where Jim Barlow would come give a presentation, so that we could talk about this in a broader public forum, and having him there as our expert to guide the discussion, I think is, is something that we, we want to do. We're hoping that we'll be able to do that at some point, to have him here for an hour, and invite everybody from the public to, to talk about what they envision as the charter changes. And I know we're going through it line by line, but we're also setting aside certain topics that we know will be of bigger discussion after we get, you know, down through Chapter, Chapter Eight, so that's, that's somewhat of what our vision is going forward with the charter.
So one of the interesting things that I found in listening to Jim Barlow is similar to many of, much of my experience in the school district realm, there are as many types of town governance as you can imagine in terms of the sixteen counties, and so you, we, you know, there was this expression, a weaker mayor or a stronger mayor, I was like, where does that come from? And there was, so basically, it's, there's never just one person, there's, there's a mayor and an alderman, a board of aldermen, there's a, you know, a town manager and a mayor and a Select Board, and I think I was totally surprised at the variations, although I probably shouldn't have been, of how town government works around Vermont, because Vermont, as we all know, is very independent, and so each little area, either from past practice or what they decided to do, I think one of the interesting things for me is there, you, we could be the Bennington city, there is no differentiation in, there's no, you don't have to be a certain size, you don't have to have a certain structure, you can just ask the citizens of Bennington if they want to be- You can just ask the citizens of Bennington if they want to be Bennington City, which I think surprised me. So, Jim Barlow is incredibly knowledgeable about all of this, and I think for the community to hear that there are many different structures and many different things that take place within these structures would both be helpful to the Select Board and the community as we go forward. So, Stu says we can't co-opt your meeting for a while, though, right? So, that is--
We have some pretty full agendas coming up at us, so.
And so, just as a final point is, we're meeting weekly. We're meeting at the town office every Wednesday, starting at 11:45, and we go until a little bit after 1:00. The conference room's, I think, a little bit small, but one point we want to make is that we encourage people to come and be there with us, because one of the things that we've been doing is quite simply, whoever's there, we'll ask them a question if we believe that there's someone that might have an answer to it. And then, there are some questions that we go out and find answers to ourselves.
Okay, maybe we can just ask a couple of questions of you, if possible. The, a lot of folks can't get to the noon meetings, as you probably are aware, but there is a way that they can communicate with the committee. Am I right in that?
Is that--
Yes.
Yes, there's supposed to be a way. There is literally a comments box on the webpage that we're encouraging people to use. There's also, and I believe that's the main way to do it, there's also, quite simply, something could be sent to us if we can't make it at that time. And also regarding that time, we've not heard from anyone outside of the committee itself about that being a very big issue.
Okay.
I hope we can. We've talked about it ourselves, to a certain extent, that the lunchtime meetings might not be the best for everybody, and our intent is to have some public forums that won't be happening during the lunchtime.
Where is the webpage located?
It's on the town website. It is a little bit difficult to find.
It's very hard to find.
If you can share with whoever has the copy, Jim, on the, and for anybody listening, so if you go to the Bennington, Town of Bennington, Vermont website, there is a tab that says "Meetings," and at the bottom of the list, it says "Select Board," and under "C" it says "Charter Review Committee." And if you click on that tab, it brings you to our homepage, and it has the Charter Review Committee, and it lists the agendas, the minutes, and then on the second page of that handout, there is a box similar to what you might see on many websites that ask for comments or input. It does say that you will not get a response. I tested it this afternoon, and I got an email back, and the email back thanks anyone that's sending it for their input, and that the comments will be posted along with their name under the comments section, and is a matter, for a matter of public record, and any inappropriate content will not be posted. You can also present comments in person. Citizens' comments are heard, and we go on to give the web link and where they can find more information, and then we list all of our names, so that if somebody wants to, you know, look us up in the phone book or call. We haven't really discussed exactly which evenings and when, but we're, as we're trying to get through. I think ideally, we'd like to do it after Jim Barlow does an evening, so that people would be able to see if they couldn't come to the meeting. The other thing is that, in terms of getting the word out, there was an article in the local paper before we started, there was an editorial, and when Mr. Therrien writes for the banner, it usually appears the next day in Vermont Digger. And two, I think we've had three articles on four of our meetings, so we're really trying to get the word out.
I'm personally impressed by reading the minutes of the, how productive the meetings are. That hour must go very, very fast, and especially when you're doing a line-by-line review. And I can't speak for all the members up here, but I think that's the way to challenge this project. Other members?
If someone were to attend one of your meetings, how much participation should they expect? Is there a public comment period, and then they would just be observers, or what? Just give me a flavor of what to expect.
The meetings, we're literally sitting around a table, working, so the meetings have really been working meetings. There is a specific time for public comments that we have at the beginning of each meeting, but usually what has happened is that the public that has been there, they're engaged in the discussion as it goes along. It's not been an issue at this point, mostly because there hasn't been all that many people there. But so far, it's been something where we're having discussions with whomever might be there at the meeting.
So, I'll give you an example. So, one of the topics in Section, in Chapter Two, or Section Two, was around the treasure. And there was a discussion in the meeting about whether we thought that treasures should have some kind of qualifications, and how we might go about doing it, and it was really just a discussion around the table. Joan came in, and we asked her if the state requires any certification, if they do any training, and so we were able to find out what she's been through, and then in turn ask to find out, not necessarily from her, but to find out what the state does in fact require of elected treasures. So, we put that on the side, and we voted on the rest of the section, and, you know, we'll come back to that. And that's kind of an example of how we work, and maybe why we only go through one chapter.
Thank you.
I'd be interested to, I was really sorry to miss the Jim Barlow first event, and it sounded like it was a meaty event. I'm wondering if you're going to kind of do these meetings the way you were scheduling them all along, and then have a big presentation at the end, or if you're planning to do kind of interim presentations along the way, and--
I don't know.
Don't know.
Well, to put that in a little less flip answer, we do intend to have essentially public forums, as I mentioned. That will be something where we'll be presenting what we've been working on. We will be soon talking about what our final report will look like, and we have not gotten in-depth into that discussion yet. So, during that discussion, we might have a better answer on whether or not it's going to be something where we'll present some things along the way, or if it's going to be, this is what we present at the end.
Part of it is guided by what we're allowed to do, or what we're supposed to do. I think what we, what we were told is that we don't put the charter out, or you guys don't put the charter out to vote in one 23-page document. You put it out in sections. So, what we have discussed is that we want the report to be professional, in-depth, and we talked at the last meeting about any changes that we'd have, you know, not to vote on, but for the public and for you. This is aside from the report, sort of annotations on the side around the discussion that might have happened, similar to what we just talked, what I just talked about with the treasure, and that, so if somebody sees that we didn't change that, that section, there would be a note saying that the discussion was around qualifications, state requirements, and things like that. So, people would know that we didn't just go over it, because Joanie came in and said, whatever, and, you know, we decided we weren't going to change it. We've had, even if we don't change it, we discuss if we should change it. Does that answer your question?
Well, it goes beyond answering my question, but I do look forward to the next sort of, which I appreciate, but I do look forward to the next kind of summary meeting, when there is such a thing.
Well, I think, you know, if we're able to give updates, you know, like I just did about the treasure, but that was only one little piece, I don't know. We'll have to either discuss it as a committee and maybe figure out if we're not supposed to give you pieces, or--
Right. Yeah, well, that's a little bit of the dilemma I'm getting at, in that if you sort of share your thinking along the way, there's an opportunity for correction or redirection, on the one hand, and on the other hand, you could get stuck there. And really, what we're looking for is your best insights on this, and your deep-penetrating thinking, which from looking at the minutes, it looks like you're really doing a deep dive on this. So--
Well, we can thank Nancy for our-- We asked her to repeat back our motions, so we can remember what we--
She makes you sound better than you really are, I think.
We asked her to repeat, so we know what we're actually, after we went around the table three times, what we were--
I think it's great you're doing it, and I think it's great you've been able to do it through the summer, no less, so thank you for keeping at it.
Genie.
Well, I think my questions are all along the same line. So, you had mentioned that you wanted to bring Jim back and maybe have him use, like, this, a piece of this time, so that it might be more accessible, or better advertised, or something. Do you see that, I think it's the same question you're asking, maybe, or continuation, do you see that as something to happen midway, to sort of bring the public more fully into this, or do you see this as a culminating piece after you've been through your review, and then you want to be able to say, have Jim say, so here's what's possible, here's what it was possible for them, for you guys to look at, and sort of the variations that are possible, and here's where you, what you've come up with?
With that particular piece, I think we're thinking of it as something early on, where we could get insight--
Okay.
--from the public, as, that we might be looking at going forward, rather than a presentation that will then get comments from.
So, like October, I mean, are you looking for an October date? I mean, I don't know if that's possible, but just in terms of months?
Stu was looking ahead to your agendas, and, you know, we, he said, you didn't think September was gonna work, right?
Well, possibly the last meeting in September might work. I mean, if in fact the decision is to bring Jim Barlow here--
Mm-hmm.
--to make that presentation, then I think it's really up to the chair and the vice chair to determine how we squeeze them in, but we have been pushing some large agendas out there.
Yeah, like tonight. I'm a little concerned about using the Select Board time to have Jim Barlow come as an agenda, per se. I like the updates, this is a really valuable piece, but Jim is your guidance, guiding light right now, and the public as well. I see the committee coming to the Select Board with its recommendation. I don't really want Jim Barlow's recommendation until it comes basically from you.
Yeah, this wouldn't be a recommendation.
No, it's not even a recommendation, poor choice of words, but I think if it was a forum, great, you can all be invited to go, but I wouldn't really want it as part of the board agenda.
Well, that's really good to know, Tom, because I think--
I mean, that's my--
We'll find another way.
Yeah.
I mean, we, you know, we want to find a time that we, I mean, again, we're televised, it's public, it's evening, and it wouldn't, I mean, that was just our idea, to get as much word out. I mean, certainly, you know, off the top of my head, I can think of saying, maybe we'll do 5:00 to 6:30, and if, you know, I mean, if you wanted to start at 6:30, I mean, I think we can talk to Stu about a way to do it, now that we know what you're thinking.
I see the committee sitting here, and Jim coming. We'll advertise it, make sure that the Select Board is there to observe, and the public is invited to participate. Because I don't, I really get concerned if the Select Board actually gets involved in the project until it comes, and I don't want to undercut that process.
So, on that note--
Yeah.
--I would say that you're all citizens of Bennington or North Bennington--
Right.
--and that please put the comments into the box, or send them to us in written fashion on sections you think are working or not working, just like any other citizen would in the community for input. I mean, we're looking for input from everybody--
Right.
--not, you know, a certain group of people, just anybody who wants to participate.
Hearing the discussion tonight, do you feel that, could you give us, sir, a semi idea of a timeline, or do you think it's even too premature because of where you're at with two sections right now? Are we gonna be, the charter talks about a year--
Yeah, a timeline for a final report?
Yeah.
It's premature. We wouldn't be able to give you a timeline.
Good.
We have discussed whether or not it would be something where we'd have certain recommendations, and then we'd know that there are others that still have to be looked at after that, and that's just because of the timeline of voting that we have.
And the final question I have is, do you, are you getting enough of resources? Do you need anything from the Select Board or management to help with the process?
I could say that the staff has been fantastic, and Jim Barlow has been very responsive, except for the time when he's on vacation, but we understood that. But as of now, everything's been working very well.
So, also, just, you know, we were under the impression, as a committee, that you, as a Select Board, wanted a report in time to warrant it for the March meeting. So, with that, you know--
Did we say which March meeting? No, you're right.
I agree to do this, because it wasn't--
I know.
It wasn't for years and years.
I know, I know.
So, we're hoping to get you something, even though we can't say if it's gonna be the whole charter, or, you know, maybe we'll say that this particular section needs another year to get information on, but here are the changes in Sections One, Eight, Ten, and Twelve.
Okay.
You know, something like that. But we'll know as we go through it. I think we anticipate to be through it before, certainly before December.
Great.
I mean, we took this time weekly, knowing that we might have to add more time or evenings. It was just a way to get started.
Thank you very much. Your committee is great. Any other questions before we allow them to? Thanks very much, and pass that on to your committee. We really appreciate their work. Wastewater Treatment Facility upgrade presentation started at 6:35. You must be just about wrapping up.
If I may, Tom, this is Wayne Elliott from Aldridge &amp; Elliott. They have been engineers working with us out at the wastewater treatment facility since 2007 or '08, and have initially prepared a massive report on the upgrade that was presented to this board, I believe in 2010, and grabs into '11. At that time, Tropical Storm Irene came along. We also ended up with the water tank opportunity for the south end water main, water line. So, we collectively decided to push this back and continue the planning effort. And Wayne is here today to give you an update of what we're looking at. Just to clarify, we are under an assurance of discontinuance for the construction and replacement of the RBCs, the rotating biological contactors. There are additional upgrades in this proposal that are not part of the assurance of discontinuance, but the assurance forces us to an October 10th voting date, and therefore, that is our goal, is to bring all of this before the voters on October 10th. And there will be a formal public meeting on October 2nd, which is the Monday before the vote. And Wayne, it's all yours.
Good evening.
Good evening, Wayne.
So, Wayne Elliott from Aldridge &amp; Elliott. So, we've been in the, what we call kind of the Step One, the preliminary engineering, and so tonight is really to give you a brief overview of where we've been, kind of where we're at, and as Stuart said, this transitions well into the preparation for the bond vote. So, this is probably a good overall view of the plan. If you're not familiar, you've got access from Harrington Road right here. One thing of interest on the next slide is parts of the facility date back to the early 1960s, so, for example, you have the part of the headworks, the digestion, you have tanks and buildings that go back almost 50 years. you have tanks and buildings that go back almost fifty years. The majority of the facility was constructed back in nineteen eighty-five, so that includes the buildings, what we call the rotating biological contactors, the operations building, primary, secondary clarifiers, the compost facility is right here, that was built in nineteen ninety. So, just again, some dates, the compost facility was rebuilt in 2004 after the fire. And Stu mentioned the twenty-year evaluation that was completed in 2008. And then, 2016, you had one of the rotating biological contactors burned, and that has been replaced this spring. This is a picture of the unit. You can see, it's basically plastic media large discs, and so the fiberglass cover burned off, and you can kind of see the steel superstructure remaining. If anybody has questions as I'm going, feel free to jump in. So, yeah, background, I've been involved in this project since 2006. The twenty-year evaluation was a state Vermont discharge permit requirement. That was a comprehensive evaluation of the treatment plant. It also included a lot of work in the sewer collection system and going through the pump stations. So, that was done and completed 2007, 2008, submitted to the state. That identified kind of deficiencies, future needs. Then came out of that in 2012 was the preliminary engineering study, again, a comprehensive evaluation, more of a focus on the existing treatment plant, but a little bit on the pump stations. We initially came up with a larger upgrade project that was around eighteen million. That was pared back to total project costs of thirteen million dollars. And as Stu said, you know, there wasn't any activity or action on that moving forward. So, purpose and needs, you know, typically, you know, a lot of the equipment, we're talking about pumps, mechanical, heating, ventilation, electrical, has a life of twenty years. You know, this equipment has served the town very well up until about 2015. As long as it's well maintained, you know, you can get, you know, upwards of twenty-five years. You start to approach thirty years and get into some issues. Overall, you know, the plant's been very well maintained and operated and has an excellent track record of complying with the state permit limits. Again, replacing aging components to reduce frequent failures and cost of repairs. A lot of this equipment, once it gets to be twenty-five, thirty years, it's very hard to get parts. Really don't want to put a lot of money into something that's really at the end of its useful life. So, the town really got way beyond, or has gotten way beyond with a lot of this equipment, the twenty-year useful life. Due to failures with the rotating biological contactors, last summer, the town's starting having some effluent violations. So, the state issued a twelve seventy-two order in August of 2016. And within that, there was a timetable established for assessing, replacing, repairing the RBC units, and there's a total of thirty-two of them. That continued on with further effluent violations. The town staff did their best out there, replacing gearboxes, drives, doing the repairs, trying to keep things up and running. But then, there was an assurance of discontinuance issued in April of this year. And there were, along with that, there was a fine that the town was responsible for paying. There were two requirements. The first one is the current operations of the facility had to be evaluated within sixty days. That was completed and submitted. Still waiting on kind of state review and approval on that. The second piece of that was the planned schedule for replacement of the RBC units, and that has been recently submitted within the last couple of weeks, which is the draft of the preliminary engineering report. Other purpose needs, obviously, we want to maintain the useful life of the facility with long-term reliable operation. Consistent compliance with the discharge is, is critical so you're not subject to fines. And the other thing is you don't want to negatively impact the, the water quality of the river by, you know, recurring consistent effluent violations. Anything new, we'd optimize the processes for energy, operational efficiency, kind of the sustainability. There's obviously a lot of code compliance changes since the mid nineteen eighties. So, we, the areas that we're doing work, we would bring those up to curtain code, also bring in safety compliance issues. And at the new control building, there's gonna be an overall computer. We call it a programmable logic controller where the operators can monitor and remotely monitor and even sometimes operate some parts of the facility. So, the proposed project was included, the headworks is where the preliminary treatment occurs. So, that's taking out the large solids, the grit, and also the screening, the inorganic material, the plastics. We propose putting a new headwork screening structure in upstream of the existing headworks. And again, that takes out the inorganics, the plastics. If you don't remove that, like what's going on now, it carries through your liquid process, ends up with the solids, and makes the disposal challenging. The rotating biological contact replacements, you've got thirty-two. One was replaced by the fire this spring. The town is working on replacing a second one. So, a total of thirty new units are gonna be replaced. Of the thirty-two, there's gonna be eight new fiberglass covers installed, and twenty-four of the fiberglass covers refurbished, eighteen new drives. The town has purchased many new gearboxes. A lot of those are on and up and running, so don't need to purchase or replace several of those, and then some electrical upgrades. The anaerobic digestion system is primarily where the, the sludge is treated. So, it does two things. It treats the sludge and also does the volume reduction. The primary digesters, those tanks and structures date back to the sixties. There's two primary digesters. So, that includes everything from refinishing the steel covers, all-new gas safety purnesses, sludge pumps, piping, control system instrumentation, and also heating, ventilation upgrades. The sec, secondary digester is the same thing, cleaning of the tank, cover refurbishment, sludge pump, piping replacements, again, heating, ventilation upgrades. And then, for the control building, we're gonna add an addition on that. Part of the purpose of that is the motor control center, the electrical needs to be replaced. We need to be, have space to build that so we can keep the existing unit in operation while we're doing the construction. So, that's gonna include a new motor control center electrical, and I mentioned previously, the new SCADA PLC control system. So, this is split up in separate contracts, really at the choice of the town. The first one, we're calling the, the wastewater treatment upgrade project, and that includes the three components here. I'll get into in a minute. That's gonna be more of our typical construction project, full engineering, contract documents. Work's gonna be done by a general contractor because, for example, when you're getting into the anaerobic digesters, you've got all the trades, and you've got process piping, and you need electrician, you've got heating, ventilation, you've got painting and those things. The RB, RBC replacements in the gearbox is the thirty of those. That project is gonna be managed and the work done with town resources. So, the town is gonna go out and direct purchase that new equipment and do the installation themselves without requesting any reimbursement from the state for, for account, you know, town labor, materials, equipment. So, the wastewater upgrade project is primarily the, the headwork structure, which is gonna be located to the right here. That's gonna be a new building with the screen down below grade. It's gonna be in line with the influent pipeline. Again, to remove the organic material, get it out of the flow stream. That's gonna be brought up above grade automatically. It's gonna go into a dumpster where it's disposed of off-site. The anaerobic digestion upgrades, which are the two primary tanks in the building, the secondary tank, again, refurbishment of the covers, replacement of sludge pumps, piping, gas safety, the boiler heat exchanger. And the control building expansion is gonna be done to the south, and that's gonna contain the new electrical and the PLC controls. So, these are just some photos. You've got the existing headwork structure to the left. The grinder's gonna be removed. The unit to the right is what we call an automatic, a mechanical bar screen that has vertical slots in it that keeps the organic, inorganic material from passing through in this direction. And it's got a series of rakes, and it pulls that material up to the top and drops it into a dumpster for disposal. These are the covers of the primary digester tanks. So, again, refinishing, replacement of the covers, gas safety equipment. You can see the right to the rollers. There's some concrete repairs and work that need to be done. The control building, this is the motor control center, which contains all the electrical for the existing facility. Again, that's thirty years old, hard to get parts, replacement parts. That's all gonna be completely replaced. The addition on the building is gonna be, again, be at the south end, so that's gonna contain the new electrical work. So, the construction cost breakdown for this, the headwork screening, about five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Control building upgrades, which includes the building addition, the motor control center electrical, the control system, six hundred and twenty-five thousand. The majority of the money here is in the anaerobic digestion upgrades, two million six hundred and forty-four thousand. That's a classified space. So, all the electrical and gas safety and stuff in there is very costly because of concerns with the methane gas that's produced. Small purchases includes cleaning of the tanks, asbestos, lead paint inspection and miscellaneous. So, for the upgrade, we're looking at four million eighty-eight thousand dollars. The RBC replacements, each of the units is under the fiberglass enclosure. Again, a series of plastic discs. You can see a gearbox that was removed, a new gearbox in the upper right-hand corner. Down here, you can see some of the repairs. In this case, the cover's gonna be replaced, but, you know, that's the fiberglass cover that protects the discs inside the RBC units. The RBC replacements, this work was actually developed by the town, but the equipment for the thirty units, three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The RBC enclosures, the new and the refinishing, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. The gearbox is three hundred and ninety-six thousand. Crane rental to remove the existing units, lay, install the new units in, sixty-eight thousand, a hundred and sixty thousand for electrical upgrades. So, even though the town's doing all this work, you know, it's about four million ninety-two thousand. If this work was being done by a general contractor, this number would be up around seven or eight, seven or eight million dollars. The replacement, full replacement of each of those RBC units is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. So, by the town doing the work, the administration, management saving significant dollars here. So, this is a total project cost summary. So, up to the right, you can see the construction costs. State requires that we carry a ten percent construction contingency on everything. For the wastewater upgrade project, we have the engineering services. We have to put full contract documents together. There's process engineering, heating, ventilation, structural, electrical controls design. And then, for the construction, they require we have full-time onsite resident representation and help the town administer the contract, monthly pay requests, submittals. The second column here is the RBC replacements. Since the town's managing that, we'll have, on the engineering side, help them with the bid packages for the equipment and meeting some of the state program loan requirements. So, generally, we're looking at a total project cost here of nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand. That also does include some other project costs, administration, permit fees, allowances for short-term interest. Stu asked me to kind of put this slide in here and give you a perspective. You know, Bennington is one of the larger municipal wastewater plants in the state. There's others of similar size that have gone to recent upgrades. Part of this, a lot of these facilities, the majority of the work was done in the mid nineteen eighties when they were upgraded to secondary treatment. South Burlington just completed an upgrade about three years ago, complete, comprehensive, twenty-five to thirty million dollars, similar-sized plant. Brattleboro completed a comprehensive upgrade a couple of years ago, similar price range. Essex Junction completed in 2014, about fifteen million dollars. St. Albans is of a similar size, and they're going to construction out to bid here this fall, about eighteen million dollars of phosphorus. So, your plan, even of similar size, by the town, you know, taking on responsibility for the RBCs, you're looking at still significantly less than these projects had to invest to, you know, go through a complete upgrade here of, of similar-sized facilities. Available funding sources, typically, these projects are either funded through USDA Rural Development. The town doesn't qualify for that because of the population cutoff of ten thousand. So, the other option is through the state revolving loan program. The town is on the priority list. The term of the loan can be thirty years, but they're careful about keeping the term at the useful life of this equipment. You don't want to borrow the money for thirty years and have equipment that's got a twenty-year life. The interest rate is two percent, so it's twenty, twenty equivalent payments. They have quite a bit of money available, so they're trying to subsidize the work out there. So, any, the engineering-related costs, the town went through a qualifications-based selection process. Fifty percent of the engineering is eligible for loan subsidy, which means the town isn't gonna have to pay that back. That's up to a maximum of three hundred thousand dollars. You can get up to three hundred thousand in loan subsidy. On the construction side, you're eligible up to three hundred thousand dollars based on the affordability criteria. And the other good news with the state revolving loan program is the first loan payment isn't due until two years after the substantial completion of construction. So, this project, you know, if we get through the upgrade, I'll show you the schedule, that first loan payment isn't due out for waste, so it allows the town some flexibility to phase in the rate increase to cover the kind of upcoming debt retirement. So, the loan payment impacts to the sewer rates. We're looking at a bond authorization of nine million eight hundred and fifty thousand, an approximate loan subsidy of four hundred and fifty thousand between the engineering and the construction. Loan amount up to, again, about nine million four hundred thousand. Annual loan payment would be about five hundred and sixty thousand. This would increase your quarterly sewer flat rate about thirty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. So, to give you an idea, right now, your current sewer rate is ninety-five forty-four per quarter. So, right now, the average residential sewer user pays about three hundred and eighty-two dollars. That is well below the state average. Right now, the state average, I would say, for sewer is gonna be in the four hundred and fifty to five hundred dollar range. So, that's gonna put you up to an annual sewer fee of about five hundred and thirty-three dollars. So, we have separate schedules here, and part of the reason for this is the assurance of discontinuance has a schedule outline as far as the replacement of the RBCs. And the schedule's pretty aggressive, and really, what we're trying to do with the town is make sure that all of this work is complete next year. The bond vote's scheduled for October tenth. We have to put the bid package out there for the RBC equipment before the, before the bond vote. And part of the reason for that is, once we open the bids in mid-October, it takes about four to five months between going through a shop drawing process and going through the fabrication of the equipment. So, it's really important that we have the equipment for the first eight units ready to, on-site in early April. Because, once the weather breaks, the town can only work on one train of eight at a time. They need to keep the other twenty-four units fully operable to make sure you can comply with your permit discharge limits. So, they'll work on eight at a time. So, they'll start pulling those out, get the new ones in. Once they're up and running, it takes another week or two to run them before they can get them fully into service and jump over to the next train. So, that gets them all the way up into, you know, December before all thirty-two units are complete, replaced, back up and running. The upgrade project, again, because the schedule's not tied to the assurance of discontinuance, there's a little bit more flexibility there. We start the final design in November of this year, advertise for bids in April, start construction roughly June timeframe. The duration of that is gonna be well over a year, so that's not gonna be completed until 2019. Again, part of that's some sequencing issues. We need to keep the electrical to control building operating. When you're doing the anaerobic digestion upgrades, we can't take all three tanks out of service. So, it's one of the reasons why the construction duration is, is longer than it would be typically. So, again, the good news here, your first loan payment on this revolving loan wouldn't be due until about 2022 September. So, again, it gives you. be due until about 2022 September, so again, it gives you some time to transition in that rate increase. Okay? So this was kind of a reduced version, one of the things we'll, we'll kind of kick around, probably want to put quite a few more slides in on the purpose and need and some of the existing conditions for the bond vote hearing, and so we may pull some of this stuff out, add some slides for the, for the public piece of it, but just kind of wanted to give you a quick overview tonight of kind of where we're at and where you're headed here into the transition for the bond vote.
Questions, maybe before we get through the questions, I just have an observation. The, one of the slides suggested, at one time, there was an estimate of a $13 million project back in 2012, I guess?
Yes. It was actually 17 million, I think, was, we got us, I think the original estimate was around 17.
Was around 18, and then...
Eighteen to Wayne's head, yeah.
Yeah, and I got paired to, paired to a base project that was about 13 million.
Okay. What's, this would be like state-of-the-art, once this is up, would be that, what's the life, 20 years of a...
Again, 25-plus years, as long as it's been well-maintained. One of the things, Takash, you know, not everything is going to be touched at the existing facility, you know, what we're looking, again, everybody's really concerned about the cost, so, you know, it's the biological, it's the RBCs, the anaerobic digestion, the headworks, you know, and the work at the, at the operations building.
Because we had an RBC last year, that's the one that, or two, or how many were placed last?
Well, we're actually replacing two. One, one was damaged by fire, that has been replaced, and we ordered a second one, and that should be installed soon?
Installed.
It's installed now.
Was that, was insurance, we get insurance coverage on...
Insurance paid for the fire-damaged one, in fact, we just got the final payment on that, so that was, that was an insurance situation at 200, estimated 225,000, so we recovered those funds. The second unit, we were able to purchase for just around $100,000, is that correct? Depending on whether they're low-density or high-density, the price changes, it runs from around $100,000 is the low end, to up to $160,000, $170,000 at the high end, depending on the density you're trying to achieve with the bacteria and the contactors. So I don't have those numbers fixed in my brain, but...
But I think we actually budgeted for that one.
Yes, yes, we did, and we've actually been continuing to replace gearboxes and drives, and some of the recent work that was done on the recommendation of a firm that contacted Wayne because of our problems with basically uneven loading or overloading of those contactors has actually given us an opportunity to watch how they function and watch how they load and unload, because you can, you can work with them once you know what's happening, and so we're able to do that now digitally and be able to monitor those on a daily basis, and it's, it's actually been very, very helpful.
The last observation is that this is a pretty aggressive participation on the town side for the...
It is that.
And that's $7 million, you know, either way, right? I mean, if we contracted this out to be another $7 million...
It would double the price.
And we're, we're able to with our existing workforce and...
Yes.
Expertise?
Yes. I mean, basically, you're taking the unit, you pull the old unit off with a crane, set it on a truck, it goes away, you put the new unit back in. We can, we've done all of the mechanicals in hooking up the gearboxes and everything, so on the recommendation of RJ and Terry, that we thought we could save several million dollars by doing it ourselves, and they've, staff is committed to making that happen.
And does the state have to approve that arrangement? You know, that, do they have to have a comfort level that we can do what we say we're going to do?
Yes, and they've already, we've had a conference call with them, some of that is outlined in the report here, the town submitted separate information. Initially, the thought was that that would have to be funded in a different manner because the state wouldn't touch it, it's pretty uncommon for them to just fund the equipment of something that size, but had a very good positive call with them, they've got plenty of money, and, you know, they were willing to be very flexible and kind of helping the town achieve that goal. From the engineering side, we'll have some minor role in that, again, helping out with the bid packages and facilitating some of that, and then during the construction, we're going to have somebody onsite anyways and just kind of help with some of the administration side, some of the paywork checks, checking, but yeah, they were agreeable, in fact, they're coming into my office on Thursday morning, and we're going to talk to some of the more of the details and, because that's going to move pretty quickly here.
I'm just going to take this, you said interjecting the questions is fine, so I appreciate that, but I'm just hearing, and mind you, you've been working on this for years, and I can't thank you enough for that report, I've, I've asked for it multiple times, and people are, I mean, you've opened a Pandora's box of questions for me, and I'm sure that's, you know, same to many in this town, and it does, I hope this doesn't come across as frustration, it's a little bit interesting that we're the current select board members that are now tasked with kind of solving this problem, and I'll, and I'll use that word lightly, but $7 million, it sounds like it's attached to a labor number, am I hearing that right? You know, as far as savings goes, it's easy as pulling off, you know, some piece of equipment and then the town reinstalling, is that $7 million in cost savings?
No.
Labor-related, or where's that number coming from?
So, just to kind of frame that a little bit, so the RBC work, just the equipment right now that's in the budget, and that does not include any town labor, any force account, that's about $4,088,000. If the town was to kind of go the traditional method with replacing the 30 units and go to a general contractor, that number would be seven or eight million, that would include the equipment, the contractor's labor, electrical, demo and everything else, so the town is really, you have that kind of differential, is really saving, you know, three to four million dollars by doing...
I get it, it just, it sounds like a, it's a, there's a big spread there, and it's just something where I want to be clear that, that spread, if we're able to make up for that difference in town employees...
Without impacting the budget.
It just seems kind of too good to be true, I guess is that, I'm stating that now with not digging into it any more than a 20-minute presentation, that, I hope, I mean, I, I hope I'm wrong, I really do, it sounds great, and it just, it's something that instantly kind of makes me wonder, and that's, now's the time to mention that, that's all.
I would, I could probably add to that, I think, you know, the, the town staff down there has an incredible amount of experience working on those units in the last nine months, so in some ways, they're probably more qualified than a general contractor coming in, just working with the gearboxes, replacing them, pulling the units. It is a huge undertaking, but I think from a technical, you know, capability, you know, the people that are there are probably more capable than probably the contractor's going to be.
I mean, it's great to hear, I mean, we have people that have worked in these units for, from all their existence in this town here, so it's nice to know.
Yeah, if it's really effective, Terry, afterwards, we can contract out as general contractors for the next one.
How do you want to do this, do you want to go...
Yeah, go anyway, go anywhere.
Left or right?
Anyway, anyhow, or...
I'd jump in, sort of a corollary to what Carson was saying, which is that I, I do worry that these other communities are going for sort of comprehensive upgrades, so they're really doing the full fix, they're, they're doing it properly and doing it all the way, and I worry about what we're giving up, and are we, you know, in some fashion, kicking the can down the road even though we're spending the almost $10 million on it, so I'd like to know specifically what we're giving up in saving this much money.
Let's see, probably the easiest thing is to go back to the initial slide here. So one thing to probably, just to frame a little bit, if you look at those other facilities, it's not quite apples and apples, and to give you a little perspective, South Burlington, for example, you know, out of that 25 or 30 million, you know, 10 million of that may have been on the biosolids train side, they went all the bells and whistles, sludge de-watering, they have co-gen, they have, they have a lot of other things, so if you're starting to back that out, you know, you're probably, you know, more in the upper teens as far as a comparable number. St. Albans is probably similar, and that includes about three and a half million of just straight phosphorus upgrades that you're really, in here, we're really just dealing with the age-related items. The things that we're really not touching here, the equipment and the primary clarifiers, those tanks are 30 years old, but they're in very good shape, so it's the interior equipment, you know, pumps, electrical, the work at the influent pump station, you know, pumps, piping, controls, generator, the secondary clarifiers, again, internal equipment, you know, sludge pumps, the filter here, which is used seasonally, that would be interior equipment-related. The compost facility really isn't used, and of course, the de-watering was upgraded not too long ago anyways, so those are probably the primary items that wouldn't, wouldn't be, aren't being touched here that were in that initial base project, you know, back, you know, four or five years ago.
And they're, they're good for another 20 years, you think?
Probably not. You know, they are approaching the end of the useful life, so at some point down the road, there probably will have to be another, another phase of work here.
So 10 years?
Probably less than that.
So, but a comprehensive upgrade would catch, would catch all of that stuff?
Yep.
Is it appropriate to ask about what happens if we don't do this upgrade, given we're under...
If you don't do the upgrade?
...quarters to do this, yes.
Yeah.
What happens?
You have the assurance of discontinuance, and that's specific to the RBCs, if you continued, well, you'd be subject to fines, and I can honestly, it's pretty uncommon to go through that process, so I couldn't even take a guess on what the fines would be. I have been, over the years, involved in a couple cases where bond votes didn't pass, and the amount of the fine was going to be similar to what the increase in sewer rates was going to be, so it can be pretty hefty, pretty significant. You know, the assurance of discontinuance is a legal order, so that would be the next step, you know, if the first bond vote didn't pass, then there'd have to be some more discussion on the second round, but ultimately, you know, the town could be facing some pretty hefty, severe fines.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. I just, I have the concern that, you know, and it sort of goes to what Carson started out with, you know, we're the select board facing this that probably should have been faced earlier, we've done, we've had such a fine work, staff, management, now we're having to sort of pull together, and if we pass this as a community, does that mean, you know, that we might be faced with another bond vote for another five to seven million dollars? Then our credibility as this board is going to be impacted, if, you know, are we doing too, are we asking the community, we're just kicking that can down the road with this project, or is it something that we have comfort, that we're not going to be going back to the community in another five years, or something within the timeframe, that the community's going to say, hey, we already did this, why are we doing it again? And, you know, what's, what's the management's feeling about it? I know you're trying to be...
Management was charged with coming up with a project that, that the community would support. I think that this project addresses the main concerns, the functionality of the plant and its ability to meet its permit requirements. Yes, are, is other equipment in this, in this facility aged? Yes. Will it have to be replaced at some point? Yes. Can it be replaced on a annual basis as opposed to a massive, a second massive bond vote? I think so. It really, it really depends on how well we've maintained the, the original structures, which are all concrete, and if they, if they are not at failure, then we're talking about replacing the parts within and the parts that handle, and, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an expert in the operation of that facility, but, you know, when, when I sit with a select board, and it wasn't this board necessarily, but the board several years ago, the idea was that we needed to get this into a project cost that was manageable for the taxpayer and the ratepayer, and, and still solve the problems of meeting our permit requirements. I think this project does that, but we can't say that, you know, five years from now, are we going to have to be spending more money to fix some of the other systems? Yes, we probably will.
I think that this board then, and subsequent boards, is going to have to be very aggressive of looking at budget time and, and looking at amortization processes and reserves, so that we won't, that board will not get into a position, maybe, and I say maybe because I don't know.
Yeah, I, my, my suspicion is that we will, we will find ourselves budgeting on an annual basis, probably beginning five years from now, to replace portions of the secondary digester in the systems within it. The filter is, is, is something, it's used only seasonally, it's not a massive mechanical situation, so that can probably last a good, long time. We're actually now looking at, at more efficient ways to remove, it's a sand filter, basically, once that sand gets entirely contaminated, so to speak, it has to be removed, and the only way we've been able to remove it is by hand, so we're looking at, we're looking at other systems that will be a little bit more mechanically intense, but will, will cost the same because it'll take us less time, but those are the kinds of things that, that I think are happening right now. The staff is taking a much harder look at this facility and how it operates, and trying to come up with more cost-effective ways to, to continue the operation of the plant successfully and not essentially bankrupt the ratepayer who is facing, and this is a substantial increase in rates for us.
It is.
As Wayne said, and I was not aware of that, that, you know, that it brings us into the average of wastewater costs statewide, I didn't realize we were as low as we are, but if you listen to the folks who pay those bills, they think they're very high.
Well, I think at that public hearing, we should have that information of...
I agree.
Yep. Other?
Yeah, I think this is a super quick question, the price tag, did it include the state funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all based on the state funding.
Okay, and then the other thing, is your report or your analysis going to include, like Stuart, we've been talking about what's in the future and when we should be planning, is that part of what you're going to provide us?
We, we didn't, the scope, so the, the report that we finished up for five was comprehensive, it included everything, so if you go back in there, it's got the ages of everything, it's from start to end of the whole treatment plan, so that information is still there, most of that is still valid. For this latest report, we kind of focused on these specific work areas, again, it was concern about, you know, the, the cost and making sure it was manageable and reasonable, so we didn't go back and revisit every single element, item out here.
Okay, and our town staff may already have the answers to those questions at hand. Thanks.
Carson? Sorry, I used a couple of my questions up, but I wanted to just finish, I asked that other question because it was, it was timely to the discussion Thomas having. I just took some notes as you were going along here, and I, and I'll do my best to be brief, because I think people want to hear from you, not from me. I, I know people speak really highly of the work you've been doing, and this was, again, very informative, and it just kind of reinforces to me, again, that this did not creep up on us, which is something now that we're kind of making a decision for the beginning of October, is something where I, I think as we get to a town forum, you're going to hear that concern over and over again, and it's nice to emphasize the idea that the increase quarterly is bringing us in line with state kind of averages, but even still, it's in conjunction with increases in other bills around our community, so those all coupled together feel more like a, a big wave versus these kind of little ripples, but I just want to kind of say that looking at the timeline, this is not new, it's just we're deciding in a short period of time. So the idea being of kind of the level of install, you know, we kind of look... So the idea being of kind of the level of install, you know, we kind of look at it as like a base model versus a premium model, and, and everything in between. Some of these towns are choosing these 18 or $20 million installs. We're, we're looking at the kind of most economical at this time, knowing in the future, probably within, we're hearing from you, something in a 10-year maximum, there's going to be prices and bills coming our way in addition to this 10 million we're putting in now. So the answer is-
That's correct.
Yes.
That could be a combination, kind of as Stu alluded to. You know, I think the things that are left, some of the things are relatively simple, so it's, it's items that the town could budget and do out of a capital. There's a couple of things that are a little more complicated because of the equipment controls, it would have to be dealt with separately, but I don't think that we're talking about everything left would have to be done in an overall upgrade project. And, you know, the good news is, you know, the tanks and all that stuff have a 50-plus year life, so those are the kind of things that we're talking about that are left here. It's the equipment inside the structures primarily.
And that kind of leads into the idea of, this is a major bond vote, as, I mean, I don't think, this isn't a small number to anybody in this community.
Sure.
And it just kind of leads to, the goal, I would think, you know, us as a select board, we're conscientious of the fact that we're going to have more payments in the future, but I think I would feel okay not putting into the select board's plate in the future another massive bond vote related to this subject. So yes, we're tasked with it, but I don't think it's fair to kind of set the next select board up or the one after that for another bond vote. And I, and I, I'm not attempting to point any fingers here, but like, if we can avoid that for the next people-
Yeah.
-that, I think that would be kind of a healthy working goal.
Sure.
As you say, I mean, we could end this subject and now, I mean, we are going to vote on this bond, and the hope is, you've kind of got the cost as low as we can, but we can not vote for it as a community, and then we're going to essentially be told we're going to take the bond or some form of it. Is that correct?
Yes. This is a little bit of a unique situation because in most of these that we do, a bond vote is typically held in November, March, around another, you know, another vote. The assurance of discontinuance really drove this. The town, whether they wanted to or not, was really required to do the bond vote in October, and part of that is so they could stick to this schedule. And if we waited till November, the state wouldn't accept that schedule because it makes it pretty difficult to get all the work done next year.
So voting yes or no at this point, I mean, this is out of, this is out of our hands.
Yep.
I mean, it's, am I wrong in saying, I mean, it's kind of an obvious here, it's nice I'm being educated on it, but at this point, it's, it's going to happen.
What I hear, the penalties can almost equate to the cost of doing the project and fund and amortizing it. That causes me some concern.
I just wanted to know, and I think the public would like to know, that, and I'm, I'm all for saving money, but we're not saving money, we are saving money, but we're not going to sacrifice the quality of our water.
No, no.
Okay.
A corollary question to that is, we're not saving money, and I'm sorry to press you so hard on this, but I really am interested in this kind of comprehensive upgrade notion, but we're not saving money by putting cheaper equipment in. So the RBCs that we're replacing are not knockoffs from China or something like that.
Oh, no.
These are-
No, absolutely not.
-the best quality equipment. So that that we are doing is really good and is going to last for a long time?
Yes.
We're not doing everything, but this, these other things that we are not doing, Stuart, you're saying we could potentially phase in over the years, perhaps we look at, at some sort of budget anticipation of that, so it doesn't come as a complete surprise to the next select board?
I, I agree. I think that's all possible, yes.
Yeah.
In several earlier discussions about this, Stu, I asked you point blank that, and you said yes, that the state, we are being compelled by the state of Vermont to address this. Yes or no? The RBCs, yes. That portion, that portion of the project that involves the rotating biological contactors, we are being forced to hold the vote now, and as Wayne has indicated, it's because they want to see these replaced by December of next year. And, and they believe that an aggressive schedule is warranted, and in spite of the fact that we had, we tried to convince them that we were on track to hold this vote in March at town meeting anyway, fell on deaf ears.
Other questions? This is, this is not going to be a commentary between the public and the board. We're going to warn the hearing, it's a public hearing, going to be on September 2nd?
October 2nd.
Yeah, thank you.
It has to be within 10 days of the vote.
And at that point, the public will have the opportunity to inquire.
Okay, one question to the end, I'm going to move, I'm going to brief the board, so...
You're going to brief the board?
Yes. Just work.
Please do it, but we're not going to be spending another hour talking about it. But go ahead, Mike. Come, but, I'm sorry?
So I was hoping all the-
No. You know, if, if you're, I will take the two of you to make brief comments, but I'll tell you, we're not getting into a public hearing on this tonight.
I would suggest one of the gentlemen's here. I agree with Carson.
Would you just recognize yourself because the-
I agree with Carson and Tom, and never agree with Campbell, but tonight I do. I think you've got to, you've got to, is this possible that we could put two prices on a vote in March? One, to get us out of the trouble we're in now, and you people keep talking like this gentleman and Stu did about what the future is going to bring. And then the other one, if we wanted to go to full boot to make it so it's good for another, how many years did you say, sir? 30 years, 50, 20, 20 years? But we do that because right now, what I'm hearing in the public is, and I'm baffled because I'm, I think we're forced into voting for it, doing something, but Carson brought it up. There is a fairness here. You guys don't want to kick this down the road to the next select board, like many select boards have done, and now it's in your lap. I think the people would understand that honesty and transparency.
The, one of the questions, I think we have to vote in October on the, on the RBC. There's no question about that, right?
That is correct.
But would you put two questions on there? Stu, legally, do you know?
I don't think so.
You don't think you can?
No, the wording is very specific in the statute as to how you must frame a bond question, and I don't know of anything in the statute that provides that you can have an either-or. Give us this, or give us this. I, I, I don't think there's any precedent for that in the statute.
Because I, I, like I said, I support, I support this because I don't, you, Stu, with other boards, have backed this board into a very, very bad situation. And then what Abby was talking about earlier about the rates and all like that, we need to have a full discussion after this bond goes through about what we're going to do with our water rates and all of this, and be honest about the project. It's going to cost us five or seven years, we're going to come up with another umpteen million dollars. And if you guys at least be honest, they can't throw it back and say, well, this board just kicked it down the road.
Well, that's the concern that I think we have, is that, you know, is this project big enough right now?
I don't understand how Bruce Brattleborough and all these other ones did the big, only other thing is, are we going to be guaranteed if we use our own staff, that if they screw up this thing, are we going to have insurance problems or guarantees on the equipment?
I think, Mike, I'd rather have, could you ask that on October 2nd?
Okay.
Thank you. Mary, if you'd be brief, please.
I guess this is exactly what I talked to all of you about four months ago, my grave concern in listening to the discussion this evening, that you keep talking about yourselves as a select board. You actually are slash the water board, and I would have thought you would have been more in the, I guess, process of building what this was going to be. I brought this to you, as I said, it's at least four months ago, talking from the state level that this was one of the issues on their table that they were talking about. Now we find ourselves in this position, and Carson and Don are exactly right. Should we be looking at doing the whole project at this time? And yet you're all kind of talking like you're not totally sure what would be the right thing going forward. So I'm very concerned with this discussion that we're at, and I've asked now twice for this as a select board slash water board to address some of these issues, and now we're addressing it, and you're kind of looking a little bit like deer in headlights.
Okay, I, I disagree totally with that, and I appreciate your comment.
I'm sure, I'm sure you do.
Okay. But I can tell you, from what I understand, this is not something that you've been, been working on for the last week. This project, if you look at the history here, maybe you didn't get the benefit of this handout, you should before the second, this has been being reviewed for how many years now?
Well, initially, we started in 2008-
Yeah, yeah.
-with Aldridge and Elliott, and-
And this most recent program plan work effort, it's been how many months, years, a year in the work?
We, this has been probably the last eight months.
Yeah. So we were, been responsive to the situation as we know it.
And I will say this, Tom, if, if, if it was this board's decision to want to go for a bigger project, although we haven't really planned that with the state, you know, you, you could amend the bond amount and ask for a larger, a larger bond anticipating a larger project. I'm not sure how that would play with the state of Vermont, who's now anticipating that we're coming in at this amount, and they've, they've looked at the figures and they, they're into it, but I, you know, you change the number here and you go for a larger bond, but I, I, I don't think that's necessary at this time, and, and I don't think that it's necessarily fair to the, to the ratepayers to, to by guessing by golly, jump off the cliff.
I think what we're planning, and what we hope is that if, and when this passes, that we have a budgetary process that anticipates the potential replacement amortization of what we already have, so that we're not faced, as a community, with another bond vote, that it would be part of the budgetary process. And that's what I would hope that we'd gain from this.
Sounds like that's a possibility.
Yeah. But you do need from us at least a public hearing notice, don't you, to make this happen?
I have, yeah, it would be the next agenda item is to sign the warning. Basically, the residents of the town of Bennington are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street and said town on Monday, October 2nd, for the purpose of a hearing on the proposed $9.85 million wastewater treatment facility bond to be voted on Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, at the Bennington Fire Facility. The polls were open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that's pretty standard. The question, shall the bonds of the town of Bennington in an amount not to exceed $9.85 million be issued for the purpose of upgrading the town's wastewater treatments facility? And it's a yes or no vote.
I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to warn that.
And a second, a more, a further discussion on the, of the warning. Hearing none, all in favor, signify with your right hand up or left. Seven in favor of the hearing.
Thank you.
Notice. Could we just take a very brief recess, just a stretch? Try to keep it very brief. Thank you. We just have a minor item here, TIF update. Thanks for bearing with us. And before we even get going, Dan, we, we're the beneficiaries of the application draft and the work product, and the hours that you and Mike and others have been involved with this is worthy of comment and commendation because it's not easy, what you've done, but it's been, it's very, at least to this reader, maybe because I've heard it so much, it's becoming clearer and clearer why this particular district is so critical to the town's future. But I'm sure I didn't take any of your thoughts with lead on.
So thank you very much. I'm, I see you, I'm budgeted for 10 minutes, and I promise to keep my comments to 10 minutes, but I'll stay here as long as you want to answer any questions you want. So my purpose tonight is to do a quick update on where the staff and the consultant is in our efforts to develop the TIF plan and the TIF application. And what, I did present to, or send to the select board the TIF plan, and that's one portion of the overall TIF application. The application actually is about the same size or more information that goes along with this. So what you're seeing is what you're going to vote on eventually, and then we are also preparing, Mike and I are preparing additional documentation that will go to VEPSC, and that's kind of where we're, where our focus is right now. So that's kind of where we are in the process. I just want to do a quick kind of primer on TIF, very, very quick, like I said, 10 minutes.
You know, as we sit here, this is probably one of the more important things that we as a board are going to be dealing with, so don't feel constrained by, and the board membership neither. This is too important, the public, we want the public to understand the importance of this and look for questions and answers that may be forthcoming, because as I said, without a TIF, our future downtown is pretty bleak.
Dan, we just gave an hour to a fluvia, we can give 15 minutes.
Okay. I'll, I'll be here as long as you want, and Mike and I'll answer any questions that you have, but I don't want to, I didn't want to belabor. So I'm just going to go through a quick PowerPoint, and then you folks can answer questions or ask questions, and Mike and I will try to answer them. The reason I'm, I'm planning to be brief this evening is because we do plan to have Stephanie Henley and Gail from White and Burke come on September 11th, and they are, they are fonts of knowledge, and Mike and I are still newbies at all this, so we'll do the best we can to answer your questions, but we'll have the experts here next time. So first, just kind of a reminder of what TIF, TIF is. TIF is a, it's a tool that provides a new, and it's important, a new revenue source to fund investments in public infrastructure without placing additional burdens on local taxpayers. It's, I feel compelled to say this, and Donald actually coached me to say this, it's different than the sewer bond, because the sewer bond, there's not a new revenue source to go with it. The TIF is identifying a new revenue source that will pay for any infrastructure that we would, that we would propose to be constructed over the 20-year life of that, of the TIF district. So that's an important, I think, distinction. You know, folks are concerned about new bonds, new, new borrowing. The important thing about a TIF is there is a, not only a new bond, but there's a new revenue source identified to, to pay for that infrastructure. So thank you, Donald, for that very important point, I want to drive that home. Just a quick review, this is, this is how TIF works, and then the next slide is why TIF is a great thing, so bear with me. The way TIF works is we bond for infrastructure improvements, we build that infrastructure, that infrastructure facilitates private sector development, and then that private sector development creates new revenue through additional, additional value that is taxed, therefore the tax increment, that is, that is used to pay for those, that public infrastructure. So here's why TIF is so important. You say, well, why wouldn't you just go ahead and, and build stuff and use your municipal taxes to pay for that infrastructure that's, that's, that's generated by that new development? Well, this is why TIF is really important. Why TIF is important is because we get to keep, as a municipality, 70% of the education taxes that would normally go to the, to the state, to Montpelier, for that new development. We get to keep that and over time, build a, a, a fund that will pay for infrastructure. So you can see here the idea of TIF. You have your, we haven't talked about this yet tonight, but we have before, you have your original taxable value, that's the value of all property in your TIF district before you do new development, any new development, even new development that arguably doesn't happen because of the infrastructure you do. That, we get to count that additional tax revenue towards paying for the, the infrastructure. So you got your original taxable value, that goes to the state, no, it also stays, it goes into the general fund, the highway fund, et cetera. And then any new amount generated by new development, and this is new development, it's reassessed because they've, they've created new value, new wealth in the community, taxes on that new development, 30% of that education fund portion goes to the state, 70% we get to keep right here in Bennington. And that's why TIF is such a powerful tool. It's a totally new revenue source that we would not have access to if we did not, if we do not take advantage of TIF.
And then after 20 years, you didn't sort of talk about that?
Well, that's, yes, and that's a good point. After that 20 years, all that new tax revenue goes to the state, not only to the 30%, they get to keep the 70% additional. So at the end of your 20 years, state gets the, the full benefit of that new value, and of course, the community is, is gaining, getting that value throughout the whole period. But good point, thank you, Donald. Okay, so let's talk about what, what's in the TIF plan and what are the main components? So the first, they all go together, but there are three components. There's identifying the TIF district, what's the boundary? So we do that, and that's based on, and we're going to come back to this slide, that's based on where's your public infrastructure going to be, and we listed the, the potential public infrastructure projects, I'm not going to go over them this evening. public infrastructure projects, I'm not going to go over them, uh, this evening, but you can see there's, there's many, um, let's see if we can get rid of that. Okay. Um, so there's many public infrastructure projects, and then where's your private infrastructure going to happen? So, we'll go back, you can see, all of that happens within this TIF district. So, that drives your boundary, where's your infrastructure going to happen, where's your private development going to happen? In addition to that, the state says it needs to be within a designated downtown or within a growth center. Now, we have both, so we have a little bit of flexibility, um, and if you look at the pink, uh, boundary, that's our TIF district, and you look at the green, that's our designated downtown. So, for the most part, our TIF district is located almost exclusively within the designated downtown, with about, with two significant, uh, areas where it goes outside. One is the Bennington Station parking lot, because we expect to do some infrastructure there, and even more importantly, it carries out to Ben High for Middle School, which we think is a very important redevelopment project, and, uh, working with our consultant, feel pretty confident that the state will agree that that makes sense. So, there's your boundary, there's your infrastructure project, uh, there's your potential private development. One thing I will say about all of this, um, is, this is a plan, will it happen exactly like this? Absolutely not. I can guarantee you that it won't, but it, but it shows a way forward, it shows a potential of where this infrastructure can occur, and where this private development occurs, so you can react to changes and know, uh, what makes sense and what doesn't. St. Albans, they had a plan, they put together a plan, and you know that they've been very successful, talked to Don McLeod the other day, asked him how his plan was going, he said, "Great, but it's not anything like what we expected."
Is it still within the context?
It's still within the context, and it's like, basically the same properties, but, you know, maybe you think this property's going to happen next year, but it happens three years from now, and the property you thought was going to happen 10 years from now, it happens two years from now. You can't control those sorts of things, but we've identified what we think are the, uh, the big pictures.
One sec, Dan, we'll go on to the next, but the randomness of these, these selections here, uh, how does, how did one find themselves or not find themselves on this list?
Okay. They're not random.
Well, I, I respect they're not random, but I mean, I guess...
All of these are, are projects that we've identified over the past, probably 20 years, uh, as possible areas that can be redeveloped, renovated, um, it's, they're vacant lots, they're underutilized buildings, they're properties that property owners have said to us, "Hey, over the years, we'd love to redevelop this, but we just don't have the money, doesn't make sense from a market standpoint." So, are these every single property, is this every single property in town? No, but we, these are the ones that we've talked about, heard about, where there's interest over the past 20 years.
I'm going to continue that question and just look at a couple of, I mean, some of them's, uh, jump off the page to obvious, I mean, Putnam Block, okay, there's the far left of the bell curve, but if I'm looking at a, a number eight, Cone Building, where does, how, how does that relate? Can you just describe that one?
Sure, though, so many, so these are, those are, there's tier one, tier two, tier three, if you look at the, uh, plan.
Yeah.
Tier one is where we think development's very likely to happen within a short term. Tier two, medium term. Tier three, much more speculative, we hope they happen, we hope that there's new development. But it, most of those, you know, downtown main street buildings are underutilized buildings where they, the owners may be expressed to us, "Hey, we'd love to have, we'd love to renovate our second and third stories and have apartments there, but we just can't, we just can't see it happen." Or, you know, that these, these properties have been vacant for years, and we, we hope that the infrastructure will incentivize those particular projects to then move forward.
So, that one, for example, Carson, is like a bump in 250,000 or something, in, in their, its assessed value, so it's not a, it's not, some of these are million dollar projects, and some of these are...
And that's, and that's just it, I mean, it, there's, the, the size difference there in just knowing some of the spaces better than others, it just, I, it was a curiosity question, maybe I'll take, I'll just take it offline, it's fine.
Yeah, no, and we're happy to chat about how, how those, and are there others? We hope so, we really hope so, because this is supposed to be a very, very conservative outlook about, over, over the next 20 years, uh, of, so you can see, I have a, a long timeframe to look at, and it's hard to predict anything really beyond a couple of years, but we're, we're required to by the state to do that. Um, so, then, after we, after we look at, you know, the projects, the private development projects, the infrastructure projects, we do an analysis, I say we, White and Burke and VEPSC will do an analysis, what's the incremental increase in value, and what amount of, of revenue will be generated to pay for, uh, those public infrastructure projects? And we've been able to do the math, White and Burke, and show that this list level of incremental value will definitely pay for that level of public infrastructure over the 20 years. And that's really what the state's going to look at, they're going to look at, is this realistic, does it make sense, do you have enough value to pay for the infrastructure that you're, that you're proposing? Um, and, and they really look extremely closely at that, and that's the, that's the analysis that they're going to look at and, and, and want to make sure that we've made that very clear. Okay, um, and again, I'll answer whatever questions you have, but I do want to update on, on the process, and where we are in, in the process, uh, it was the main purpose of this, of this meeting, so, right now, um, you folks have the, the draft, uh, TIF plan, which is the, the part that the select board, um, will be reviewing and approving, that's, that's your document, that's your plan, uh, that's what the community has to adopt to move forward. We will finalize that plan, uh, over the next week and a half, give you what we hope is a final draft for your September 11th meeting. Um, at the September 11th meeting, it is hoped that you folks will adopt that plan and, and authorize the staff and your consultant to complete the application and submit it to the state, which is, in particular, the Vermont Economic Progress Council, and they'll review that plan, and they'll review all the information that we include in the application.
And we've had one public hearing already on it.
Yes, and we've already had one public hearing, uh, very well attended, according to our consultant, more people than she's ever seen at any TIF meeting, so that, we feel good about that. I know that John Shanahan and, and other folks really beat the bushes to try to get people out to that, so we appreciate that. Um, so, once, once we've, once you guys have approved the plan and authorized staff to, to complete the application, we'll submit that, uh, to VEPSC, the state, and the state will hold three hearings, they'll hold one in Bennington, and then probably two more in Montpelier. The one in Bennington will be the opportunity for, um, folks to testify about why they believe the plan either does or doesn't comply with the statute. Um, that's all that it will, all that it will be about, it won't be about whether you think it's a good idea or a bad idea, it's whether or not, does it comply with, with the statutory requirements? And that, VEPSC will hold that hearing in our community, uh, probably in October, if our timeframe, timeframe holds up. Um, after those three hearings, they could have more, but typically it's three, the board will, VEPSC will then vote to approve, deny, or approve with conditions, um, our, our application and our plan. So, then, the, once it's approved, that simply means that we now have this tool available to us as a community. It doesn't mean we're, we're borrowing money or we're obligated to borrow money, um, it just gives us, uh, the opportunity, if we so desire, to seek to bond for improvements that we believe will incentivize development. And no money can be borrowed until the public votes explicitly for a bond. So, we would expect that the, the lion's share of the education for the public and the, uh, rolling out our plans and providing, uh, the basis for, uh, moving forward will come before the first bond vote, because folks really pay attention when, when, when the vote's, uh, scheduled, and we really hope to have, have, uh, folks, uh, learn about, even more about TIF, and why the specific bond that we're proposing makes sense. Um, at this point, we don't even have, uh, a number or, or exact time of, of how much we're going to, of how much we're going to ask for in the first bond. Um, we're hoping that the first bond will occur in March, meet, at March meeting, but again, we're not tied to that, that's going to be the select board's decision, whether or not we feel comfortable going to the voters at that time, uh, to, to, uh, pay for infrastructure, to bond for infrastructure that will support new development. Obviously, the biggest and, uh, most, um, most important piece of, most important private development that's on the horizon is the Putnam Project, it is hopeful that that, that in March, we could vote to support, um, that project. But again, this is not, the TIF plan, VEPSC approval, all that does not at all, um, require us or, or obligate us to do anything, uh, beyond, um, to, to obligate us to bond for anything. That's all going to be in the future.
As important as, I think you've touched on it, as important as the Greymour property project is, that's not the under, that's not the reason to have a TIF district. If that were the only, uh, project, we wouldn't be even sitting here talking about a TIF district.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't waste our time going to the state either.
This is basically that funny figure there, uh, that's where we anticipate projects over the next, what, what's the timeline for bonding, is it...
Okay, the timeline, the timeframes are, you have, uh, you have five years in which to vote for your first bond, you have to do that, or your TIF, um, would disappear. You may be able to get an extension, but under traditional timeline, the, the initial timeline is five years, you have to vote for your first bond for your first infrastructure project. You then have, you also, you have 10 years from when the TIF is adopted to bond for anything. So, if we're doing that first 10 years, you can bond once, twice, three times, you can bond zero times, but you, you, you have to bond, you, you, you can bond as much as you, as many times as you want for the first 10 years. After that, there's no more bonding, and you, but you continue to generate revenue that will pay for those bonds. And any amount that goes into that, uh, special TIF fund can be used to pay off those bonds, um, over the life of those bonds. So, the math, the math you try to get at is the money you bring into the, to the TIF fund is, you hope, almost identical to the money you're putting out, uh, because you don't want to, you obviously don't want to fall short, but you also don't want to have additional money in there that you could have used for infrastructure that you then send up to the state, um, instead of putting it into your community. So, it really is a balancing act, and each bond that we look at, we're going to look really carefully at, to make sure it's the right amount, and that we have, we have the revenue to support it, and that we are investing in our community.
Other questions?
Um, do you know of developers that are sort of waiting in the wings for this to happen? Oh, sorry, do I need to say it again? Do you, do you know of developers that are waiting in the wings, waiting for the TIF district to get approved, and...
Yes, we've talked to, we talked to developers who believe this would be very helpful. Obviously, we've already talked about the Putnam, they've essentially said, "This has to happen for Phase Two to happen." I mean, and that's a huge, a huge amount of revenue that we can hope to generate. Um, but yes, there are other developers too, who have discussed how helpful they think this would be.
Great, okay, thanks.
It's fitting that you brought this slide back up, and I, and I know I built the question in before.
This one, or the, the development?
Any of them.
Okay.
No, the, the map here, um, I jumped in a little too, too deep to my question, I apologize for that. What I was relating to was the, and again, I don't want this to come across as short at all, but the, kind of the arbitrary purple line, I mean, it's, it has some meaning to it, and I respect that because I'm from this community, but just some, a couple of key concerns that jump off the page, and this might be, hey, Carson, we'll figure this out after, but, um, Energizer plant, it's, it's probably drastically overutilizing square footage, and, and I'm hopeful that it remains an active part of our community, but would it make any sense, or would there be, you know, the ability to encompass something like that into this TIF district? Um, because maybe it's more challenging to put something like that in retroactively. Um, and I only mention that because it seems as though at this point, Plant Two is, you know, not very much occupied, maybe from an apartment standpoint, it might make sense. I bring that up as just kind of an observation.
It's funny, I, I thought about the, the plant the other day, and certainly, if, if it does be redeveloped, it's probably going to have to take a lot of community effort. But the short answer is, the state, we've been advised by our consultant and by, uh, the VEPSC executive director, that the state does not like to see those lines go out of the, uh, downtown district unless there's a really, really strong reason for it.
Well, I might sit here and argue as a select board member that say, "That's a really good reason, that's a really big piece of property with a really high, you know, potential value for us, if redeveloped," because I know as a vacant lot, it's, it's pretty frightening, and I, and I don't want to go to worst-case scenario, I'm just saying that we might, and I'm one voice amongst seven, I don't want to speak for anybody else besides myself right now, I just mentioned the idea of, it, it might be worth exploring, and even if they disagree, I, I might sit here as a very uneducated person on TIF, that it might be worth the exercise as far as saying, "We disagree." And, and I don't, I don't know that, I mean, I've, I know nothing about this.
I'm happy to answer why, why it probably doesn't make sense to include that right now, and there's two, there's two reasons. Number one, as far as we know, Everetti has no intention currently to sell that property or to redevelop that property. So, they're going to want to know, "Hey, has, has Energizer approached you folks, is there, is there any talk about them redeveloping that property, have they talked about selling portions of it?" And we're going to have to say, "No." So, that's number one. Number two, we'd have to identify specific infrastructure projects that might incentivize the redevelopment that way, there has to be a nexus between the two. And I'm not certain that we could identify infrastructure projects that would incentivize that, because it's, it's not like they don't, they have a water and sewer issue, it's not like they don't have enough parking for their use there. Those are the types of things that would be difficult for us to make that case to the state. I'm not saying we couldn't try, but it's certainly, because it's outside of the designated downtown, we are, we're under much higher scrutiny.
And that's why I commented I may have asked my question backwards initially, when I saw somebody on that list, you know, like the Cone Building, it just made me question, if they're on that list, there, there must be defined projects already, and some of those buildings on there, it would appear to me, and maybe a few of them I have more insight than others, but it would appear to me there's, there's not a clear redevelopment future in all those buildings, which I would kind of align a little more at a larger scale to Everetti. Perhaps their long-term plan is not redevelopment, but if their long-term plan is to no longer be in our community at some point, which I have no clue if that's true or not, but maybe we want to include them in the beginning. I don't know how hard it is, maybe it's just a light switch to change the area down the road, but if it's, get it big enough the first time, we don't have to go back in the future, but I have, I don't know, I'm just, I look at the map and it just makes me wonder about, that's all.
And, 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 you know, there is, it is somewhat arbitrary, there's a designated downtown, there's an existing boundary, anything within that is, is typically going to be considered fair game.
It's so close, it's like right there, let's just, over the purple line.
I think you can, I think, uh, Stephanie can probably answer this much more articulately than I can.
And you did say in the beginning, you're not the expert, Stephanie is, I'll hit her with questions, I promise.
Yeah, I think Stephanie's going to say, "That's going to be a tough one to sell the state on." Yeah.
We did push hard, though, to push that district out to the middle school, which it wasn't originally.
Well, that one, we can all agree quickly with that.
So, we had to leave the downtown improvement district to get there, and, and so there were, um, it's a little giving and taking.
And there always is, I mean, you can see right on the line, Derby's Garage sits right on that corner, too. So, I, I mean, I guess, there's always a, what's the next building to include?
Yep. And again, so, I guess what's important is, just because you're outside of the TIF doesn't mean that you, that you wouldn't be redeveloped or wouldn't benefit from some of the infrastructure. So, being in the TIF doesn't really give you any specific benefit, it doesn't raise your taxes, it doesn't lower your taxes, it doesn't make you more important for redevelopment, or less important for redevelopment. It's just that, within the TIF, we have to identify to the state potential projects and potential infrastructure, and how they fit together. Um, it's, I've had good discussions with folks, um, who are north of the district, as we all know, the Four Corners North folks, they're doing a great job there, just because they're not in the district doesn't mean that we don't care about their redevelopment. And, in fact, because we'll have extra money to spend for infrastructure within the district, we may have some additional funds to put in projects in areas that are outside of the district, that, that we might have had to spend within the district for necessary improvements. Um, so, it really, it isn't a winners or losers kind of thing, it's trying to follow the, what the statute says about how we can develop a TIF district.
Correct.
I have a question, and I don't, I don't know if you can answer it, but I hope so. Um, under the Putnam Impact, which is on page four, it says that analysis by Douglas Kennedy Associates in January 2017, that the phases one and two would generate a cumulative total of 534 FTE jobs. Is there, um, is there a breakdown of what those jobs will be?
Now, Mike, I believe you...
It's a lot of jobs, so I'm just...
So, Mike, I believe you did this, excuse me? Good portion of it is construction jobs.
Ah, okay.
But that, the particular, um, impact analysis was done for the Community Development Block grant, I believe, so that's a...
That came out of the area wide.
That came out of the area wide, okay. They repeated that information for the Community Development Block grant, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad Mike was here, thank you. Okay.
Are we supposed to be drilling down and, you know, like editing this for you, like, because I think there's some, a few things that have been left out?
What I would... What I would request, if you guys have specific comments, email us, let us know. We wanna correct whatever, if you see typos, if you say, "Well, that doesn't sound right," or, "I would've said it this way," email me, email Mike and me, or me, and we'll make sure to try to address those things in the next week and a half before it gets to you. Because really, this is your opportunity to read it, make comment, and we'll try to, we'll try to address all those comments before it comes to you.
Well, let me just give you the one big one. I think the list of institutions could include the Career Development Center because it is a separate entity of the high school. And it's not called the CDC anymore, it's called the Southwestern Vermont.
And where were you referring to?
Um, page, it's on the, there's no real page. Oh yeah, page two.
Ah, okay.
So the first paragraph, there's listed the supervisor union, the middle school, high school. I think the CDC could be included in that as well.
Okay, yeah, that's, thank you, makes sense. Do you have that, Mike? I have to give Mike credit, he's the one who drafted most of this narrative, so he's been, he's been writing a lot.
What's, next time we're gonna be hearing from the folks from Burke and White?
They will be here, well, at least Stephanie will be here, I think Gail will be with her, but Stephanie will be here at least on September 11th for your, for your public hearing. And, so she'll be here to probably do a much more thorough presentation, to answer any questions you might have.
Could we make sure that the chamber and the various associations rotary gets the word? Because this is a public citizen's participation opportunity to get informed. Because you've gotta build this momentum and that's what the TIF process is. So we've gotta get the word out, so make sure our marketing folks do it.
And Tom, I guess I'll say that we, I've had extensive conversations with Dom Cloud at St. Albans and he did it, he's, we asked him, "How did this work for you guys? How did you roll this out? How did, how did you get people's attention?" And he said, "You do the best you can."
And wait till the bond comes.
Until the, until you float the bond and then everybody perks up and pays attention and then you go full court press and get all that information out. So no, yes, we are gonna make sure that we keep pushing that information out, that we keep trying to get it out to folks. But our full court press will be, assuming you guys agree to present, to submit the application, our full court press will be, if we can, if this tool is developed, to convince people who are gonna have to go to that ballot box and vote yes on a bond, "Why does this make sense and why is TIF a good idea?" So yes, we absolutely get that and we think it's really important because this is all a waste of time if our voters don't vote for it. I mean, we've spent a lot of time and effort for nothing if we can't get folks to vote yes.
Could you keep it now, we're already 29, but go ahead. Three.
Two.
One.
I think you guys are overselling this for your vote and you're scaring the hell out of people. You're coming up with a $10 billion bond in October and all I'm hearing on the street is now they want more money. You gotta explain infrastructure. You're not taking this money, I don't believe, in build, rebuilding the Putnam block or rebuilding stores so people can come in and rent.
Could you write a letter to the editor?
You'd have, you'd have to, you'd have to pay me big money like you're paying Muggs and the-
Okay, well, I mean, you're, being a citizen, do what you can do best.
What you need to do is say to the people, "This is infrastructure." And am I correct? You correct me if I'm wrong.
We are prohibited by law from spending any of this TIF money on anything but public infrastructure.
To explain it, you're talking pipes under the ground, you're talking-
Parks.
Water, sewers, sidewalks, that you're gonna have to do anyway. You're scaring the voter to pieces. That's all I'm telling you. Right now, I'm up in the air whether I'm for it or not. If you can bring some good product to the downtown where you know this store's gonna come here or the 500 jobs that Jeanie Jenkins was talking about isn't just gonna be construction, but we're gonna have a certain amount, we predict. And then answer the questions, if this all fails, the voter isn't responsible for the $50 million project, they're still gonna get the benefit of the $7 million infrastructure in the ground, on the sidewalks. You're making it too complicated.
Well, it's, you know what, I wish it is as simple as that because-
But if you want to vote, you have to let them know what they're risking.
And by the time the vote for bond comes about, they will be well-informed and educated. But we have to, almost, we're talking somewhat nebulous because until we get those numbers, we can't say, "Here, voter, is what you're gonna be voting for." And that's when we have that project, Phase Two probably will be the first one of the first bond. Then we'll have something to sell. But right now, we can't sell anything because we haven't got anything to sell.
It's no scare, people, by the way.
The response, I, thank you, Mike, for pointing that out. I mean, and, and maybe I wasn't as articulate as I should've been. All this, all the money will be spent on public infrastructure. Water, sewer, parking lots, roadway, sidewalks, all those sorts of things. It will be owned and controlled and operated by you, the select board. None of this will go to a private developer. TIF is, doesn't give anybody any tax breaks because that's the whole idea. If you're a developer and you build something new and you add value to the grand list, your additional taxes go to pay for this infrastructure. So it's not a break for the developer, it's a break for the local taxpayer is what it is. Because they don't have to pay for this infrastructure. So Mike's absolutely right. It's very important to point out to folks, public infrastructure, it's ours, it's ours. One of the tools that we've used in the past is where we've, we've given tax stabilization and that helps the developer maybe save some money and move forward with their project. But it doesn't give the community anything that it can hold on to as far as infrastructure and something solid that they can, they can control. So that's why TIF is so important and it's such a great tool, is we actually are able to facilitate development and get public infrastructure without impacting our local taxpayers. So I think that's a very important message and I hope that folks get it, but I know we have to say it over and over and over and we will. And we want people to understand what that, what that is.
Thanks, Dan and Mike, appreciate it.
We'll see you back here on the 11th.
All right. Tell your friends and neighbors. Memorandum of Agreements, Southern Vermont Economic Project and Zerot. Stepping to the mic. So you're the last one in and you've got the last presentation of the evening.
I think I still remember how to, you know, speak in complete sentences at this time of the evening.
I know, it's not easy.
So I provided a memo for you with a brief description of the project. This is something that I think Michael McDonough had already been involved with a little bit. It's a collaborative regional effort and I think my understanding as I step into it right now is that, A, there's been a designation for Southern Vermont and, you know, the state is recognizing that this is a region that needs help, that needs to coordinate its efforts and I can certainly feel it already. I'm in a community development office of one, two people. And I think being able to share those resources, being able to brainstorm with colleagues across the region about what it is that we're doing, what are the resources that we have, I think will be really useful for the town, certainly for me individually going forward. But I'm happy to answer more specific questions that you might have about what I've provided.
A strong region is a strong Bennington. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. We've already made that decision some time ago that we wanted to be part of this effort because we're a critical player. I think the memorandum of agreement gives us, you know, the components for accomplishing that and making sure there's an accountability period over the next couple of years. And then we would revisit depending upon how effective it is. And how effective it is will be, the proof will be in the pudding and probably the state's gonna say, "This is very well-done, we'll support it financially and otherwise." And we will decide whether or not financially or otherwise we feel we should continue. But I'd like to entertain a, I do probably need a motion for that, don't we?
A motion to approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the manager to sign it would be appropriate.
I second that.
Okay, for discussion, other questions from the board? I'm sorry, go ahead, Jean.
I just have a really quick one. Sorry, I keep turning my microphone off. Can you just give me a sense, you said there was 114 partners? Can you just give us a sense of who they are, not all 114, but just kind of in general?
I could not give you a sense of all 114, but from the, I've been to one meeting so far, which given that I've only been in this position for a month, tells you how organized they are. But they're, you know, it's everything from municipal, you know, officials to arts organizations to regional, you know, I guess, economic partners of various kinds. So they're trying to be very flexible. It's not just a city government association, it's about really facilitating a lot of public-private nonprofit coordination. So that diversity is very much there.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Jump in. I'm pretty excited about this, I think it's gonna be a good thing, but I, it's difficult reading, you know, this MOU is difficult reading in that it's hard to tell exactly what's going to change or exactly what's going to be different. One of the things that popped out at me and was interesting, I think, is all the talk about sharing of information. And so I guess, two-part question, are we not sharing information now? And then secondly, if we're not, I guess the second question would be, "How much information are we really going to share?" I could imagine that there would be a holding the cards close to the chest with economic development tendency for all communities. And so how are we gonna work through that with the information sharing?
Again, my understanding, you know, from the meeting that I've attended, that I attended about a week ago, which happened to be on the day that the governor announced the Putnam Block Grant, so other regional partners came in and celebrated that. So I think that sense of, you know, how can we get our share of the pie does not seem to be the driving motivation in this group. If anything, with regards to information, some of it is that, again, as I step into it and I'm trying to understand what this Southern Vermont region is, I'm also learning that there's often, we think of this as a region, but it's somewhat opaque about what we know about it and some of this is being able to coordinate that information. So really, like creating a data set about what we do know locally and being able to come up with a more kind of, you know, a kind of a bigger understanding of what this region is. But I think everyone who's joined so far, this group recognizes that they cannot individually do this work and it's literally because of resources. I mean, our partner in Reedsboro cannot, you know, does not have the wherewithal and their, just the, you know, the ability to spend time to figure out like how to do social media, what, you know, rural development, economic courses to attend. And for us to be able to do that as a group, I think it's just a matter of saying, "You can't do that right now, but I can help you out."
Are there other elements of this that you feel like will substantially change kind of the way we do business? Or what, just what pops out at you as being a sort of a highlight of how you think it'll change what we've been doing?
Well, this must be, this might be me speaking as an art historian as well, but I've been really excited in that, even in that first meeting, that, back to Jean's question, that this wasn't just, you know, other municipal colleagues. There were arts organizations who were there asking questions about how to address housing shortages. So I think there's an imagination that's being brought into this. I hope that's what it really will be. I come into it with a bit of the same skepticism where I'm like, are we just, you know, is this a group that's just doing this for the sake of it? Are they actually going to do some problem solving and with some creativity? And I get the sense that, that elasticity of who they're inviting as members is gonna allow that.
That's great and I think that's the part this select board would be most interested in being kept abreast on. So if you feel like you're into some new creative economy stuff and there are new ways of looking at the old problems, I think we would probably wanna continue our support. If it felt like it was churn, then maybe we-
Evaluate it.
Maybe we evaluate it more harder.
Right. But I think you're gonna be doing this in a quarterly evaluation as far as the group process. It would be helpful if you planned on docketing so that you'd report back to us with specifics of, you know, not the flavor of the day, but what things are starting to take some shape so that we can get the benefit of that.
It's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jean?
No, I think that covered it. Thank you.
Okay, we, I think we've got a motion on the floor. All in favor of the memorandum of agreement and authorize the manager to sign? Signify, that's seven in favor, no opposition. Thank you. Stewart?
Yes, we have a liquor license for Yachts Market. This is being newly reopened, so this is a new liquor license. It requires your signatures to approve on only one page, but the entire application is attached as well as the check that comes. It is not the same family, I don't believe, it's been purchased.
Nice to see it opening though.
Okay, what else, Steve?
And then we'll get to the manager's report. I have two action items that I sent out to you and then a couple of brief requests. The first action item is a request from the Bennington Downtown Alliance to close School Street from Main Street to Pleasant Street on Friday, September 1st. That's their generally their first Friday event, from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM, to provide space for the Downtown Marketplace, which is a collection of vendors and they're also seeking to bring in some live music. The last, last first Friday, these Downtown Marketplace appeared on the front lawn of the town offices and they're trying to move this around in the downtown to generate interest and activity on the first Fridays. That's the first motion that I need.
All entertain a motion?
Motion to, to close, Mr. Reed has noted.
All in favor, signify aye. Seven in favor.
The second is the annual meeting of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns is coming up in October. Every year, the board is asked to appoint a voting delegate to the annual meeting. We look over the municipal policies, those are the policies that the league will be advocating for us in the legislature in the coming year. I did attach the draft policies, they are subject to change at the annual meeting. I have been your delegate for some 25 or 26 years now and I'm looking for a motion to appoint me as your voting delegate once again and have the chair sign the delegate designation form.
All accept the motion?
Second.
Any discussion on? All in favor, signify by aye. Seven so moved and you're officially delegated.
Thank you, Stewart.
Thanks for doing it again.
Jim missed it by a hair, we were gonna sign him, but next year.
Just two other, two other things and I think Zerot has one additional. You asked me to remember to do something and I've completely forgotten it, but the Bennington Redevelopment Group is applying for a USDA grant. And unfortunately, time is short. The grant does require a letter of support from the community and I'm here tonight without much notice to ask if this board will support the USDA grant for the Bennington Redevelopment Group, the grant application.
Have we done this before?
I, I don't think we've done it for this particular grant and this particular group. This is a first, but this is one of their funding sources and they look to the town for a letter of support.
How much is the grant application?
Oh dear, you would ask that, let me see if I can pull that out.
It's a grant. Not alone.
I just like the, yeah, that's the same word.
It's not gonna tell me what the-
Do we know, approximate? It's a grant, yeah. It's not like some of our other grant applications where we- All entertain a motion for that purpose, signify, there's a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion on that grant application support? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Thank you and the last thing is something that Carson brought to my attention in a question and suggested it was worthy of announcing to you folks. As you may know, the state of Vermont did receive its- the state of Vermont did receive its declaration of emergency funding from the federal government for the July 1 storm. As indicated, we spent approximately $50,000 in doing repairs to a variety of roads and drainage ways. We have not yet spent any money on Emmens Road, which washed out entirely, although it's a road that doesn't serve any residences from the Bennington side. It runs over into New York State. But this eligibility allows us to be reimbursed up to 75% of the monies we have expended resolving issues that were created by that storm. And so I'm just announcing that we are fully intending to, to do that. In fact, RJ and our finance director, Melissa Courier, are heading to a meeting where they specifically learn how the application process proceeds. And they'll be doing that very soon. So that's just an announcement.
Appreciate that. Thanks for, Carson, for bringing that.
I guess that's it for me then.
Other business.
Happy Labor Day and Happy Children's Day.
Yes, and all the festivities that go with it.
Carson sent an email around earlier and reminded me anyway. And I think it reminds all of us that we need to keep the rescue squad on our, at the top of our list of things to listen to. So they've been trying to make a meeting with us since the, earlier in the summer. So just keep that, keep that warm, Stuart. Let's keep looking for a place. I know the agendas have been packed, but let's keep-
I think we're hoping to bring them in on the second meeting in September. I think that's, Forrest and I had a very brief discussion. I think that, that will work.
That'd be great. Good way.
The YMCA is coming then to that second meeting in September.
Who is it?
The Y.
That's right.
So no more items except for that.
Yeah. Can I just ask, the solar project on the closed landfill, I just don't want to lose that thought. Are we going out to request bids or whatever the process is to follow up on potentially getting a project going there?
We haven't, we haven't really talked about that process going forward. Dan has been locked in his office. He hasn't been out for weeks.
Slightly busy.
And so, but interestingly enough, I've been contacted by a second firm who apparently read the story in the paper about the potential. And has expressed an interest that they would like to also answer any RFP that we put out. So we're starting to gather additional competition, so to speak. And we'll probably try to address that during the late fall, early winter.
Okay.
If you give us that-
Thank you.
-breathing room.
I just wanted to thank the Bennington Free Library for handing out glasses for the Eclipse. Last week, we, I was able to get some. I got there a little late. They were opening at 10 o'clock. I was there. About 100 people lined up, and they were so efficient, so nice. And, you know, got glasses for myself and my children, and I was able to bring them to football practice. And we took a 10-minute break, and we're all, all the players were looking up. So we took the time to enjoy that. So thank you to the library for handing those out.
Yeah. North Bennington Library too.
Yes.
And people may not know it, but this is Mount Anthony's new football coach.
Is that a conflict of interest?
They've been working hard all week. Our first, or all week, all, in the last couple of weeks, we have our first game Friday night at Spinelli. So 7:00.
Weather looked good?
What's that? The weather looks great.
Yeah, I thought so. Nothing better.
It's football weather. It's going to be in the 60s.
Yeah. Hearing, no further business. All in favor of adjourning? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We adjour.